K R. Hold off, hold off with your questions. Let me, let me just finish.
When you say we stand up, we can project.
Yeah, I can stand up.
Here, if you can hear as well, there's like two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight chairs up here. Can you move forward if you have trouble hearing?
I could stand up if that helps. Absolutely. Our hearing room is being worked on right now. It's not available. We can't be big enough to accommodate this anyway. And we are limited on our technology that we have available for meetings like this. So I'm doing the best I can with what we have. Alright, that being said, originally I had posted this as a workshop. However, at a workshop, only the stakeholders and the people who are invited get the opportunity to talk. We wanted to make sure that we could hear from the public, so I've changed this to a town hall meeting so that we can hear from them. Now, Patrick has also organized several people to attend this and provide information. And the purpose that I really, the point of emphasis that I really want to make in this meeting is, we want to answer questions and we want the people uh who Patrick has, has assembled to have this discussion can answer your questions as well. I realize that a lot of you do not support this. We've got your emails. I've talked to you on the phone. I've met with you privately and I realize that. And I would hope that today is an opportunity for all of you to ask questions and to gather information and to be as well informed as you can. That's my purpose as well. I want to hear from the people uh that, that have more knowledge about this than I do. And I wanna, I wanna hear from them so that I can make an informed decision as well. That being said, we're gonna start this town hall now. Please stand and join me for the pledge of peace. I pledge allegiance to the good empire, now being held states of America, and to the republic which stands for my nation under God, in whose cause the great nation stands. Alright, going to uh, the way this, the, the format of this is, uh Patrick is going to give a presentation, an introduction. He will also intro- introduce other people who are here that have information about this topic. And then after he does this, he'll do his presentation. We'll hear, hear from others who will have an opportunity to also present information. And then after that, we have a podium where we can invite people to, to step up to the podium and ask questions of all of us that are here. But that's the format. Patrick?
Yeah, thank you. So uh, we spent several months actually working on, on the, trying to formulate a stewardship and management program for our federal public use lands. And uh, so I've had the, the privilege of actually getting to work with Mr. Doyle Shamley. He's on, he's on here. Um Natasha can maybe bring him up. But uh, anyway, so long story short, I just spent the last five days in Arizona. Got back uh late Monday night and we toured uh and drove miles and miles and miles, saw the forests, saw the water sheds. Saw the industry that was also created um around their, their programs and, and to be honest, I was very pleased with everything that I saw and the way that their community rallied around this program. Um so, I'll just get to the next slide here. So, who is Doyle Shamley and Veritas Research and Consulting? And just to kind of keep me on the point, I know a lot of you in the back can't read this, this screen up here and what I'm saying, so essentially what I'm gonna be doing, I'm just gonna almost read word for word from what I have here so that the folks up close who can see this screen will also be reading um the same thing that I'm gonna be trying my best to project toward the back of the room. So who is Doyle Shamley and, and Veritas Research and Consulting? So Doyle Shamley, he's received his Eagle Scout back in nineteen eighty-eight. He's a combat army veteran from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and four. And he was awarded three Bronze Stars from the Gulf War. He is Apache County, Arizona supervisor, as well as their natural resources manager. He's a consultant for natural resources and public land use. He has a strong expertise in political science, economics, jurisdictional law, and history. He's a current board member for the University of Arizona's Cooperative Extension, which is part of their law division uh for the Natural Resource Users Law and Policy Center. He actively teaches and consults with undergraduates from the University of Arizona School of Law. He is the CEO and co-founder of Veritas Research and Consulting. He has presented on public use, uh public land use management and stewardship to leadership in multiple counties in several states across the western United States. He frequently gets called in by various local, county, state, and federal level elected officials to testify and or draft proactive legislation to remedy the problems faced in areas with large holdings of federally managed lands. He has successfully mitigated, to the benefit of the local government, dozens of actions by federal agencies ranging from land management decisions, threatened endangered species listings, and up listings to abusive attempts at claiming water rights and policies affecting the economic, cultural, and historic uses of land, heritage, and individual rights. He conceived, wrote, and drafted the county stewardship plan to be used as a model around the country on public lands. Currently being implemented with grand results in Apache County, Arizona, on the Apache Siegree's National Forest. He's provided key testimony to the U S House of Representatives Natural Resources Committee on the strangling effects of federal policies on western land management. Currently, he has recently been appointed as the expert witness on the state of, of Arizona's Senate Federalism Committee regarding the discussion of the federal government dissolving the federal public used, use lands back to the states and to the counties. He's also currently working throughout Washington DC um for divestiture of the lands that were to be appropriated to the states so that the western states will finally be allowed to fulfill the equal footing plows. And he's been having several meetings with key individuals in Washington DC and more are scheduled within the next month. Um, do you have anything you want to add into that Doyle?
Uh no, that's uh perfectly fine. We, there is a presentation people can watch um for free on our state legislative site. Um, that I just did Monday, in fact, at the legislature. That will have um, a lot of information on the, on the legislative and criminal jurisdiction of state and local governments on federally managed lands. So it's free for anybody to watch.
Thank you. So, why are we here today? Federal, state, and local agencies have failed to follow the Code of Federal Regulations, which parentheses is short for CFR, to properly coordinate, cooperate, and collaborate with Curry County regarding the proper management of our federally managed lands for public use. These agencies have directly failed Curry County and violated federal law under Title forty of CFR, Part fifteen oh one through Part fifteen oh eight, and Title forty-three CFR, Subpart sixteen ten, and Council of Environment CEQ NEPA regulations, as well as Curry County Code, Article one, Division fourteen, Section one, point one, four, point zero, two, zero. The Curry County Board of Commissioners will be enforcing our oversight of the federally managed lands for public use and will be implementing a long-term stewardship program to exercise the powers necessary to provide for the safety, health, welfare, and to promote the prosperity of the county and its constituents in appropriate instances.
But Patrick finished your half.
Quite the rapid presentation.
That, that was my question. So no questions until the very end, correct?
Yeah. So, as of yesterday, we have new support from the United States Forest Service. I had a call yesterday with Jackie Buchanan. She's the Regional Director for the Pacific Northwest. Her direct boss is the Chief of the United States Forest Service in DC. Initially, I sent out an invitation for this presentation for uh any local or regional Forest Service staff. That invitation was denied on February seventh, last Friday. Doyle and myself, since I was in Arizona with him at the time, we promptly emailed the higher ranking U S Forest Service National Leadership and stated our disappointment in the lack of cooperation and collaboration, which again is a direct violation of federal law. We had immediate response from Jacqueline Buchanan. Again, she's the Regional Forester for the Pacific Northwest, stating that she encourages her staff to engage with their partners and not the opposite. She and I spoke yesterday and she supports our stewardship plan one hundred percent and looks forward to meeting with us to develop this plan and grow industry in Curry County again. She is originally from the southwest region and is very familiar with the stewardship activities from Apache County and other neighboring counties in New Mexico that Doyle was lead in implementing. She is familiar with how successful the stewardship programs and partnerships with the counties are and would like to see this happen throughout her northwest region. Curry County very much looks forward to our new relationship with Jackie Buchanan and the positive change that we can bring to our forests, water sheds, and our economy. So, we'll get into just a, a little bit of law. So, there's the Organic and Weeks Acts. In the Organic Act of eighteen ninety-seven and the Weeks Forestry Act of nineteen eleven, Congress authorized the states to retain jurisdiction over national forests. The Weeks Act states that the state shall not, by reasons of the establishment of national forests, lose its jurisdiction nor the inhabitants thereof, their rights and privileges as citizens, or be absolved of their duties as citizens of the state. And uh, I've referenced a couple of the articles within those for uh anybody who would like to research those further. Congressional Declaration of National Environmental Policy, Section one oh one. The Congress, recognizing the profound impact of man's activity on the interrelations of all components of the natural environment, particularly the profound influences of population growth, high-density urbanization, industrial expansion, resource exploitation, and new and expanding technological advances, and recognizing further the critical importance of restoring and maintaining environmental quality to the overall welfare and development of man, declares that it is the continued policy of the federal government in cooperation with state and local governments and other concerned public and private organizations to use all practical means and measures, including financial and technical assistance, in a manner calculated to foster and promote the general welfare to create and maintain conditions under which man and nature can exist in productive harmony and fulfill the social, economic, and other requirements of present and future generations of Americans. So now we get into via jurisdictional authority, custodial hearings. And uh, that's too small for me to read, but I've got my other sheet here. So, proprietary interest only is a category four jurisdictional authority from the federal government. So, our lands, our federal public use lands, we have about six hundred and fifty thousand acres of this category four proprietary lands and it's custodial lands. So proprietary interest only, what does that mean? This comes directly from the federal government. This term is applied to those instances wherein the federal government has acquired some right of title to an area in a state, but not only obtain any measure of the state's authority over the area. In applying this definition, recognition should be given to the fact that the United States, by virtue of its functions and authority, under various provisions of the Constitution, has many powers and immunities not possessed by ordinary landholders with respect to areas in which requires an interest and of the further fact that all its properties and functions are held or performed in a governmental rather than proprietary capacity. So, proprietary interest only, category four, is the jurisdictional category that approximately ninety-seven percent of all our federally managed lands in are held under. For instance, Curry County, the federal government manages approximately six hundred and fifty thousand acres of proprietary acres and that interest only. So we don't have military bases. We don't have national parks uh or anything which would be classified as a category one, two, or three, so. So you can see here, this map, I know it's, it's hard for you to see in the back. Um, the red is our federal lands nationwide. And you can see that about ninety-seven percent of all um federal lands are in the western states. So this just kind of shows you that, that parade family. Next slide here, you can see, you know, who owns the West. So for Oregon, for example, um, more than fifty percent of our state is federal public use lands. So, it's a, I think we are ranked third most federal land in, in the country, our state. So what is stewardship? Stewardship is an ethic that embodies the responsible planning and management of resources. The careful and responsible management of something entrusted to one's care. And natural resource stewardship is the scientifically and economically based management to meet current and future needs of multiple use, coordinating consumptive and non-consumptive uses for the most beneficial use. Again, I know it's another graph, it's difficult to see, but um this graph essentially over the last, shows over the last three decades the amount of acreage burned in the state of Oregon. And you can see that over the last decade, that number has increased significantly. And this graph only goes to twenty twenty-two. And let me state too that in twenty twenty-four uh Oregon has the most acres burned in its history and just shy of one point four million acres. So, getting into wildfire. So according to the National Institute of Standards and Technologies, NIST, wildfires in the nineteen seventies destroyed about four hundred homes and structures nationwide. Since two thousand, wildfires have destroyed approximately three thousand homes and structures per year nationwide. Quite the, quite the change.
Quite the change. You know what?
I have, I have, I have against, but.
Share them.
Let me, let me finish my presentation, please, before you ask questions towards the end. So, insurance claims due to wildfires on federally mismanaged lands have resulted in insurance claims in billions of dollars. For instance, since twenty twenty, according to the Director of the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services and the State's Insurance Commissioner, insurance claims in Oregon due to wildfires have seen nearly three billion dollars of ins- insured losses. That's more than four times the last forty years combined. Thousands of properties and hundreds of thousands of acres of land have become underinsured or uninsurable due to necessary policy changes of insurance carriers due to mismanagement of adjacent property on federally managed lands.
Now, where does that statement come from? Their cause or trajectory? So, where does that statement come from? Who made that up? So, let it finish its presentation. Well, you didn't tell us where that statement comes from. Let it finish its presentation.
Are you just pulling that out of your ass or what?
Let it finish, let it finish its presentation, then you can step up to the mic and ask him those questions. You can step right up there and ask him, but let it finish.
Why don't you ask him to be truthful about it? And open-ended, rather than telling me to shut the hell up?
Let it fin- I'm not asking you to shut up. I'm asking you to be courteous of everyone's time and when your opportunity comes, you can take that mic and you can ask those questions, but let it finish.
There's a mic for the public. Why is there not a mic for the speakers?
We don't have any money for microphones. These TVs, these TVs are his TVs. They're his. Those aren't county TVs. He brought them down here.
You said it's a mic. That's what I was trying to do. How is mine?
The podium, I'm sorry. Sorry for that. The podium. We don't have money to put into the technology of this. We're using the bear house because.
Some of that whole money is missing.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Alright, I'm gonna carry on your presentation. So regarding uh some social impact wildfire, this was a quote from State Farm to a, one of their customers. During the handling of your fire plane on the above property, it has come to State Farm's attention that your property is at a high risk for sustaining another fire plane due to the remaining stand of charred trees that were burned during the major fire last year on the lot adjoining areas. While we understand that you do not have any control over these trees, they are an increased hazard to your home and potentially other homes in the area and should be removed. If the charred trees are not removed, it may result in your policy not being renewed. Obtaining a new policy with another carrier may be difficult, at the least if not substantially more costly due to the existing increased fires. Loss of resources due to catastrophic events stemming from federal dismanagement have resulted in billions of dollars lost revenue. The Apache County Wildfire, for instance, alone caused the destruction of enough timber in three weeks to run a full-scale build of three hundred workers twenty-four seven for twenty-one years. So now imagine all the loss of prosperity for all of our Oregon wildfires. Loss of habitat, wildlife, and soil, increased sedimentation into the watershed supplies, and loss of water quality, air quality, and loss of property tax available to the local governments. In a well-documented study in Arizona, a single wildfire incident, which is the Rodeo Chineski Fire, resulted in over one billion in losses due to cost of restoration, opportunity costs of values lost, and rebuilding of infrastructure for tourism. Analysis showed this incident caused a long-term asset value loss in timber of over one trillion dollars. So the next series of slides are, they're pictures. I know it's gonna be hard for you guys to see here in the back. This started in, in nineteen oh nine and the um, there, there was a marker, photography marker that was placed in this particular location. It mounted there. And every decade, they went and took a picture of what the forests looked like. Um, and so over the decades, you, you could see, so.
Which forest is this?
This one, this one actually comes from Montana. This is a forest outside of the Zula, Montana. But it gives you a vibe, yeah, there's a good church.
Irrelevant.
So here, just, so here you have forest land here that has been worked. This has been, been worked land. So, this goes to nineteen forty-eight, is work on that land and, and stopped, starting to get more dense.
Rodeo Fire was started by arson. Correct?
I don't know how that, that fire just started. Doyle, Doyle, do you know how the Rodeo Chineski Fire is started? Okay.
So how irrelevant?
Yeah, the Rodeo Chedesky Fire was actually started by a forest service.
Just asking a question here. Go, go ahead, Doyle.
The Rodeo Chedesky Fire was started by an employee when, when a news camera helicopter came in.
And wasn't an employee the Forest Service?
Yes.
Negative. So, he was an A D firefighter.
So as the decades go on, we can still see here how lack of working the forests, it gets more and more dense and becomes more and more of an issue as fuels are created for wildfire. There's a good book that you guys are welcome to, to read as well. Um, it's also on the website that we have, that Mr. Shamley created for us called countystrong.org. So, and it has this whole book on there as well. It's called Protecting Publicity and Saving Uh Forests. And uh, it was put on by the Forest Foundation, so please feel free to research that if you'd like. The wildfire timber in the West, it was found that the benefits of treating medium and high-risk timber stands exceeded costs by one to two thousand dollars per acre. A treatment area in Apache County, Arizona, with a toss of forty-one thousand dollars, was estimated by fire management teams and state forestry to have avoided suppression costs of upwards of a quarter billion dollars. If suppression could even have occurred due to the extreme danger the landscape offered. The tree density rates in the average western forest are not at naturally healthy and sustainable levels. For example, the U S Forest Service studies in Oregon show a rough equation that our coastal climate and species can handle approximately a hundred and twenty trees per acre. But many of our forests throughout Oregon are pushing approximately one. But many of our forests throughout Oregon are pushing approximately one thousand trees per acre. Ultimately, our forests are overcrowded with timber and make for a huge increase in ladder fuels for wildfire. Growth rates exceed e- extraction rates by upwards of four hundred percent. The most recent studies and reports on forest areas show that U S forests are adding approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand acres of growth per year. In other words, that is approximately nineteen million acres in the last measurable decade. So yet the U S still contributes to deforestation as an importer and exporter of, of forest products, but um. Why not contribute more when we have more resources available to us? For example, in just the southwest forests,
Not in southwest.
The annual growth is, this is an example.
Yeah.
In southwest forests, the annual growth is equal to the quantity necessary to build nineteen hundred square foot or one thousand nine hundred square foot homes for ninety thousand families. And that is per year new fire in just the forests of Arizona and New Mexico. We have substantially more trees than the southwest. And we allow just that, you know, what we could do in Oregon to provide the much needed timber for housing and job creation for Oregonians and also for all Americans. So for treatments, although federal policies stipulate that significant resources should be invested in the wildland urban interface, or short as WUI, it has been found that a small amount of the area treated is within the wildland urban interface. Often wildfire hazardous fuels reduction is cited by federal agencies as a positive aspect of their management ability. Yet on average, only fourteen percent of total appropriated funds goes towards these efforts. So northwestern forests can have an average value of seven to eight hundred dollars per thousand board feet. For example, a minimum operable acre of two thousand board feet in the southwest forests, again, this is an example, in the southwest forests would equate to a three hundred and fifty dollar avenue. The Apache County Arizona wallow fire burned five hundred and forty thousand acres. Their direct timber loss was just shy of a hundred and ninety-three million dollars. Opportunity costs and restoration will and have exceeded two billion dollars. Long-term asset value loss to exceed one point five trillion dollars. Now I just imagine how much Curry County has lost in the past due to the wildfires that we've had. Getting into, getting into air, carbon, uranium, and greenhouse gas emissions, particulate matter, heavy metals, et cetera, and are all released at alarming rates due to federal mismanagement of the lands by wildfire. For an overcrowded, higher-than-healthy tree density, which is the north today, the western forests, those figures are alarming.
Who keeps using the term mismanagement in this presentation?
That's a presumptuous.
Let's, let's finish please, so we can get to the question.
Not even to follow.
How to determine activities?
Both are great questions to step up and ask, let it finish, I'm hearing this for the first time too.
Using forest carbon emission models, it has been discovered that an acre of land consumed in wildfire can emit one hundred and twenty-six tons of greenhouse gas. This is based on an acre stand of seven hundred trees, where much of the western forests contain substantially higher stand densities. In a more understandable form, just a handful of wildfires in Oregon can emit the equivalent of ten million cars running twenty-four seven for an entire year. The large tracts of U S federally managed lands are responsible for two-thirds of our freshwater supply and are suffering to a great extent due to mismanagement. This lack of management directly impacts our water supply through evapotranspiration. Massive changes in timing of snowpack melt and runoff, massive post-fire sediment runoff, polluted injection into watershed, and massive changes in surface water trends. So evapotranspirations. Vegetation moves water from the soil to the atmosphere or traps higher-than-normal amounts in the upper tiers of the canopy, reducing surface flow and downstream yield. In the winter period, a portion of the snow pot in the branches evaporates or sublimates and reenters the atmosphere without ever melting. Open tree stands and reduced understory vegetation protect snowpack from solar radiation versus entrapment in the branches.
Oh.
Active management system by the states can significantly improve any stress and strain freshwater supplies. Studies have shown that if proactive management were to occur, which is best done at a more manageable state level and landscape, that water demands and needs can be met and improved. Forest treatments to reduce forest cover can show an increase in water yields by several percent. A treatment area wherein a reduction of vegetation occurs shows a significant water yield increase of several inches. Sustaining ongoing treatments in our overly dense forests can increase yield for our water plants. Forest management has a well-established link to water, can be altered to meet water resource goals and priorities. Regional water planning and budgets have shown that as much as seventy percent of total precipitation is evapotranspired by native vegetation. Overly nosed tree stands, ladder field buildup, abnormally high undergrowth, and vegetation loads. Delays in peak snowpack runoff can move from days into weeks, better distributing and utilizing the water afforded from winter storage. So some other economic factors. The uni- uh, U S Forest Service spends on average five times the amount as the comparative state agency on management. The B L M spends on average two times the amount as the comparative state agency on management. Often federal agencies indicate poor quality assets is the reasoning for differentials, while most often it is a fact of over-highly management costs and lack of any incentive towards a profitable or at least cost-effective operation. Number of agency personnel per acre is one of the major contributors to these financial losses. The states average thirty-six employees per million acres. The B L M averages forty-five employees per million acres, and the Forest Service averages two hundred and ten employees per million acres.
The rest has one thirty-five for the entire floor.
We have retired fighters.
Is this entire presentation available with the notes, please?
States earn average annual revenues from land management of about four hundred and twenty-five thousand per full-time employee. The B L M earns close to a hundred and ten thousand per full-time employee, and the Forest Service earns less than twenty-four thousand per full-time employee, and these are revenues from land management. In December of twenty twenty-four, Oregon legislation allocated two hundred and eighteen million dollars in taxpayer funds to cover costs associated with the record-breaking twenty twenty-four wildfire season, which was almost one point four million acre burn.
That was all scrub over in the mountain.
So unilateral economic factors. Many economic sectors are under increased burden and threat of catastrophic curtailment, again often due to the primary land dispositions and locations where said activities occur. Legislative, judicial, and policy impacts are one of the largest threats to Oregon and its county economies and the citizens' health, safety, and welfare. A great deal of these curtailments are not seen outside federally managed areas. One of the prominent sectors of growth in the U S economy is outdoor recreation. It's one of the strongest since the two thousand and eight recession. The sector could contribute much more to the Oregon economy if multiplier effects were allowed to prevail or stay in the local economies for a longer period. This is often affected by current management policies and the agencies involved when one considers the location of activities and agencies currently responsible for their management. The outdoor recreation economy has grown by approximately five percent annually. This however often involves activities that are conducted on land areas which are not under the management of Oregon, pulling valuable assets from the state. Many of these activities, due to changes in policies and litigation, are facing severe economic impacts when considering the current land disposition.
How much more do we need to talk to?
So.
How many more slides you got, Jesus? Done with my fifty now.
Do it.
It's a dialogue.
So hunting and fishing activities in Curry County are another significant economic sector. This sector, as in others, is under greatly amplified threat of curtailment due to management policies and litigation on the state and monthly land where much of the activities take place. Um, this chart here, I know it's tough to see on there, but it shows the um how much spending and wages and taxes are all received uh that come in through hunting, fishing, and, and wildlife law.
But you have to have a forest for hunting and you have to have clean water and fish.
Public land.
That's right.
You've got a roof full of your water. And it's for hunting and fishing and outdoor activities.
Okay, I was wrong though. The next couple of slides here are our slides, um Oregon's outdoor recreation economy. Um, for Oregon, it's approximately fifteen point six billion dollars annually. And for Curry County, we get about two hundred and three billion in uh G D V, G D P contribution, so um so seventeen million in, in state and, and local taxes. So forestry and related economy. So alongside the livestock and ecological production industry, the forestry industry has the greatest disruption due to litigation, policy, and management changes currently agencies currently charge with the bulk of land management activities. Some graphics, background, and current data are necessary to realize the full economic potential of this sector and its potential to positively contribute to the county's infrastructure, tax base, and economic well-being.
Public land.
So this, this chart right here uh comes from a twenty twenty wildfire economic uh impact study where uh monetary value of timber loss in Oregon was seven point five billion dollars. So a summary of economic impacts, um so value of this pre-merchable timber for that twenty twenty five wildfire season um came to a gross economic impact of eight point five billion dollars and um acres volume and, for an acre's total, um the value of that came to about thirty point one billion dollars in just twenty twenty alone. So like I said, I was in, I was in Arizona uh for five days and uh I was able to go around and tour their industry and see all of the ancient tree that was created around it. And in a town of about the same as, as Brookings, um they have uh I would say a half dozen commercial mills, they were able to uh produce uh, uh, an old manufacturing plant for log cabins, and then lots of other citizens as well uh were able to do firewood uh type businesses where they were able to go into the uh the forests under the NIFA for the Forest Service and cut down logs as per their stewardship plan that was presented to them. Uh, and while I was there, uh it was, it was neat, so one of the mills there has a contract with, with Walmart, and so the Walmart semi-truck is there uh loading up on uh what they were able to generate from their, their industry that started there. So value of growing stock, growing timber stock, including annual growth and value-added industry enhancements uh come to the total of about uh one point three billion dollars. And for every ten thousand acres of treatment, has a predicted creation of a hundred and fifty jobs. And this comes from a report of state forests from the Chief of the U S Forest Service and United Nations. And uh the, in, I increased the dollar amount to an account for current deflation since this report was initially done back in, I guess, sixteen, twenty seventeen. So solutions. So one of our solutions we have here was working with Mr. Shamley and uh exploring his stewardship plan for the county. And this slide here just shows where uh there was an article, very prompt news, uh recognizing their stewardship plan and the success that it had uh brought to Arizona. This year, we, so the Apache County stewardship plan was heralded as a model for other government and part of a national strategy of forest management around the country in U S congressional hearings conducted in Washington, D C on July twentieth, twenty twelve. Arizona Representative Paula Gosar and the Flag Staff said programs like Apache County's contract to help thin the Apache Sitgris National Forest should be part of a national strategy of forest management, not merely to fire suppression, but to combat catastrophic wildfires. So Forest Practices Act and Sustainability. Sustainable forestry requires following best management practices to protect water and other resources. In Oregon, the Oregon Forest Practices Act mandates the use of best management practices. An independent third-party office commissioned by the Oregon Department of Forestry found that Oregon grown wood meets the leadership in energy and environmental design credit for wood used in a building project if it comes from forest subject to the Oregon Forest Practices Act. So through the Congressional Western Caucus, continued efforts uh to seek comprehensive reform of the Endangered Species Act, National Environmental Policy Act, and a realignment of agencies duties under their mechanical carters and organic documents. So they're gonna begin holding the federal and state agencies accountable through local government oversight, cooperation, collaboration, and through appropriate litigations if necessary. By vestiture disposal or realignment of federally managed lands to the states and their respective state management agencies. Currently, the new presidential administration is considering dissolving federal lands managed for public use back to the states and counties for local management.
Big surprise.
Curry County.
No, it's not done yet.
Curry County will continue to. Curry County will continue exploring our options, um. Along with the new presidential administration.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Contemplative.
Yeah.
Untreated versus treated, so these were, these were pictures that came uh. From uh, my time down in Arizona.
Where's that Arizona?
So. Almost uh. So untreated, so this was, um. These two pictures were pictures that were presented to me from Doyle back from the uh, wildfire. So you can see on this one where it's a much more of a dense forest for their ecosystem. And uh, the wildfire burned through there at a, at a very quick rate. This. Turning the camera directly around with that same van still in there. The wall of fire immediately stopped once it hit the treated lands. That would provide from the stewardship project for our Apache County. And not only that. But the uh, regional forester Jackie Buchananis. Even admitted to be on the phone, that she said because of that steward pro- stewardship program that they had. It completely knocked down the wildfire before it reached that.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, so she did that.
So here are just a couple of other pictures I took from this weekend, um. This is on. Uh, one side of the truck. Which was a non-treated yet non-treated area. On the other side, you can see where it's much more open and that was a treated side group. They approved NIPA for Forest Service for their.
Should laugh.
That's not a forest.
No.
Should laugh.
That is not a hardwood.
Tree that is not.
So we have other pictures here as well, where just down the road you can see untreated areas. And then just behind where I was in the truck, there were treated areas for their forests. And then you can see here, it's, it's a picture from, from the distance of the mountainside. Uh, from where the olive fire today. So from where, so from where the meadow turns from kind of that brown into the darker green. That's where the little Colorado River runs, that's their watershed, so you can see that their rhine area and watershed area. Are much denser to protect the watersheds from um, the sediments from uh, runoff. From the wildfire that was just above, so as you start getting higher up, you can see some of the treated areas where areas have been thin. And uh, up top, you can see where it's, it's total burn star, completely from uh, from that wildfire. So. So the flow of money. So money is accessible to us through the federal. Uh, Wildland Urban Interface Funds, which are accessible to the county for stewardship projects and enhancement. Exposure and access to more grant dollars. Through private federal and state. There are specific departmental funding from federal and state like. Uh, like the fire wise money and us also additional monies for Title One, Two and Three. Unilaterally frees up county general fund money from other departments. Creation of contracts, bonus NPs based on specific NIPA from the US Forest Service. Creation of hundreds of jobs for county citizens. This enables us to do new housing projects that are already started. Uh, that give more citizens homes and provides additional property tax funds to the county. Increases to recreation and tourism along with federal and state funding. And millions and millions of taxpayer dollars saved by a reduction in wildfires. And there's also many other funding solutions and sub-program funding solutions. Uh, still to be discovered to us along the way. As uh, Apache County is still discovering more and more funding opportunities still to this day uh, for their stewardship plan. So, um.
I'm gonna fight these five.
Go towards our, I'll just skip to our county plan here. So a county management plan. So we would be looking to create a new county natural resources department. To be created for a long, long-term sustainability. So it would consist of a department head plus one additional field employee. And these monies would not be coming from the county's general fund, these would be funded completely through. Uh, other grants and and programs. So we are, we will be updating. Will be updating the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and there will be public hearings relating to both of those. But uh, both of our, all of the statistical data and wage rate data all date back to the nineteen seventies, so they're very updated.
So you have your key ones updated last year.
So we will be working directly with the federal agency experts. On the forest and watershed management and NIPA. We will create a stewardship committee with federal and state agencies. Private entities, stakeholders and non-averse collaborating groups. To create stewardship management plans for Curry County. The county's economic development department will also be able to help the public. In creating and starting local businesses and assist in locating and drafting grants for local businesses. Uh, in regards to our stewardship plan. And again, the Forest Service is one hundred percent on board. With helping Curry County implement stewardship plans and to create more industries. And the last four slides are references to everything that I have in my presentation. It's gonna be provided to you, a lot of this information again is also. Free to you and you're able to do it, it's county strong gospel and has all of this documentation where you can uh. You can go through and do your own research as well.
Is that who produced this?
Yeah, he misses you, right?
Hey Doyle, can you still hear me?
Uh, yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna uh, take some questions, Matt.
Okay.
So here's, here's how I'd like to try to do this as orderly and of passion. I'm, I'm here today to learn. I'm here today to try to educate myself. And again, I realize a lot of you don't wanna see this happen. But keep in mind, I'm also getting emails from people that do. Okay? So. So that being said. That being said, this is an opportunity to ask questions and be informed. That's how you make good decisions, you learn, you ask questions, what I'm trying to do, the day is trying to do. So. Now we'll open this up to questions, okay? So if you have a question, what I'd ask you to do is step up to the podium. Obviously, be loud as, as loud as you can be. State your name. And if you'd like to direct your question to someone, you can direct it directly to them, Doyle is on the, on the Zoom. Obviously Patrick's here, we have some people from the Audemars Society here. Uh. And you could direct your question that way, so state your name, ask your question, when the person at the podium is done. Someone else can step up and do the same. But please, be respectful, let's try to keep this orderly, we are a community, right? We're a community and we're trying to do what's right. And we're trying to make informed decisions.
Thanks.
So my name is Patlyn Dixon, I live in Brookings in the Wui. And I have a couple of comments more than questions. Are you gentlemen aware of the two thousand eight Curry County Community Wildfire Protection Plan? That is on the books and has been for seventeen years. Are you also aware that in twenty seventeen, following the check for bar fire, an update was attempted called this um. Or done by the um, sorry. The, there it is, mitigation assistance team. I was a part of that team, as were a few other people in this room, Mr. Fitzgerald was a part of that team as well. Both of those programs are probably gonna do all of the things that you're talking about without having to take over our federal lands. And my last question is, is Mr. Shamley still? Hold on a second. An Illuminati conspiracy theorist.
We're updating our comprehensive plans and our um. And our Wui plans as well, um. There's a lot of information in those that aren't outdated and uh, we're working on a new one right now.
We.
So. So we're working with, I'm working with Doyle on doing that.
So you, yes or no to her answer?
I'm sorry. So Doyle, yes or no to which part, sorry?
Are you aware of the, the two twenty seventeen uh.
Yes.
Two thousand eight.
Yeah, so we, we have reviewed those. Doyle is in possession of those as well and we are regon rooms.
They're not on the website, where might they be located at this?
I'm sorry?
They're not on the website, where might they be located from, you see?
They haven't. They haven't been updated yet, we haven't done the new ones yet, they're being. They still be on the website and we just had a new website created, so I would have to, I'd have to research exactly where they are.
There was an update done last year for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan and sent out by Victoria Amadi to a bunch of people that were involved in that process. I'd be happy to send it to whoever liked it, it has more than thirty-seven recommendations.
Sure, you can send it to me.
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. I'd actually like to give, I'd actually like to give Doyle the opportunity to also respond if he would like to your other question.
And what was that exactly, cause there, when there's multiple.
You're an Illuminati conspiracy theorist.
Oh, it, yeah, just as per President Bush.
Can we turn that up?
Turn it up.
He said as per President Bush. I don't know what that.
What's that even mean?
What it means is that when many of us were in service. Overseas in various locations, he made his famous uh, speech about we need to enter the age of the New World Order.
Keep talking.
Yeah, explain what that is.
A, a, a world central government much like the proposals coming out of the World Economic Forum.
Is this not my business?
Thank you, thank you for putting this on today, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, it seems like you're kind of up against it here. I have a couple of questions. First, you said you wanted to learn and I wanted to give you an opportunity with the water. I have a great deal of problem with the water quality thing, I would invite you. The next time there's a reasonably heavy rain, to come up to the North County and look at the Elk River. Which is largely wilderness that burned two years ago and should just be flooding off like crazy. And then go look at the Sixes, which has a lot of private logging property on it that has been logged heavily. And look at those, the difference between those two rivers. The Elk River is running high and clear and Sixes River is solid mud. So there's a big difference between how their watershed works and how our watersheds, which work heavily on gravity. Because we have such steep country. So you need to look at real world examples.
In your own county.
Put myself on Mari Locus, I live on Elk River. And I've been with uh, firefighting for twenty years. Was on a biscuit fire and lived where I had to evacuate for the ant fire. I thought things could have been done a little differently, but everybody says that, you know, um. With each department, but uh, those fires were handled pretty well by. They were contained by the Forest Service despite it's extremely difficult situation. Who will be fighting the fires if we take over stewardship of these properties?
So, so there's a misinterpretation of thinking on there, so, so we're not taking over ownership of these lands.
I said stewardship.
Right. So, and the, we will be working directly with the agencies still. They will still be creating their plans, we're not creating our own plans, we're not telling the Forest Service what they can and can't do. We are helping them move forward more with their plan. And we're also going to be able to create the opportunity for other private entities within our county. To assist the Forest Service in uh, finishing and 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 seeing through their NIPA.
Okay, so I, going back to water, I wanna also debate with um. Mr. Shamley, the uh, concept of the snow, I think anybody can stand down here and look up at the hills and see a clear cut with snow all over it. That goes away pretty fast. As opposed to the stuff that's under the trees, we, there's definitely a big temperature drop when you walk into a. Mature forest. But um, there seems to be this concept that we're gonna. Kinda clear cut our way out of fire danger and this may not be something that applies in Arizona. Reed prod here, we have a pretty substantial stand of trees at fifteen years old. Once it's been cut. And um, then you're gonna come in and thin and you got all those trees about that big ground. Laying on the ground and um, that reed prod, you don't wanna see, you don't wanna be there when that's burning.
There's also the. The narrative that we just wanna go in and we wanna clear cut it. We can't just go in and clear cut it. This is all under the management still of what the Forest Service is deems under their NIPA areas. If they want a section completely logged under their NIPA, then that can be facilitated. If they want an area to be thin, that can be facilitated. But nobody up here, nobody within the county has any desire to go out and just start clear cutting any land.
We do it all every day.
Well, how much is it gonna be financially beneficial then if you're not going to be harvesting timber and making money off of it?
That, that will all still be coming to a head, so Doyle, can you? Can you explain in further detail, Doyle, how they do it in your county?
Well. Well, not only our county but others, um. Hence, your region six forester knows about these treatment areas and whatnot. Um. So, using the value added industries to bring in other factors than just. Tall, tall stands. Of overly dense timber being converted only to board usage. That's actually not a big. Method anymore in stewardship. Because the overly dense stands and whatnot. Uh, whether you clear cut and leave all the trash on the ground or you selectively cut by prescription. Which the Forest Service is who writes the cutting prescription. According to their NIPA review, um. The, the, the effects of the leftovers. Uh, slash. The days of burning slash. Of leaving massive amounts of piles in green pits. Are basically an end, the Forest Service as well as many state forestries, agencies. Have gone to one hundred percent utilization. We just happened to beat many of them to it. So, whether it be the chips, chipping industry. Such as Scott's Enterprises where they use it for. such as Scott's Enterprises where they use it for, they sell it in the bags that you see at big box stores and your small little hardware stores. For landscaping chips to the heating pellet plants that produce the heating pellets that are sold by the billions of tons annually uh for heating everything from homes to industrial utilization uh to uh outright firewood sales. One company alone in our region sends over two hundred and twenty semi loads of firewood shrink wrapped uh per pallet, so twenty-two pallets per truck times two hundred and twenty to the city of LA alone uh where it gets used in everything from outdoor heating for ambiance to the niche fire charred, if you will, cooking methods, whether they're a pizza or an elaborate restaurant. Uh the timber that is not structural grade timber typically ends up in laminate beam. There's a laminate beam plant here in fact that distributes all over the west and cannot keep up with the demand. Um, there's shortages in that industry as well as the MDF. You they board that I know most all of you are probably familiar with, that has become pretty much the number one method of roof sheeting. Um, those industries are all short supplied. And in fact, if you take the heating pellet industry, uh take everything west of the Mississippi, it takes it would take that entire part of the United States just to supply Western Europe's demand. And that doesn't even begin to account for the ever increasing demand in the Asia Pacific countries. Um, they want the industrial sized pellets, which are actually even cheaper to produce. They're more of a coffee can size, uh they can have a little more dust and moisture in them and residuals. Um, that is where much of the funding comes from is by utilizing to the best of your ability one hundred percent of the biomass that is acquired during proper stewardship. Now you can alter your landscapes just like any NIPA or forest plan even. So that you have park-like settings, open settings, dense stands to address different species like MSO packs. They they would like a certain sized stand or type of stand for a a fifty acre area. Whereas the goss hawks and other species of interest one step short of the TNE process. It's a forest service mechanism. Your Region Six Forester who is on board with stewardship already, she uh would be able to give you in fact the newest list of species of interest that it can stop from ever being upgraded to threaten and endangered status.
Hey, I'm gonna say this one time, I'm gonna say this one time. If everyone is gonna shout out and interrupt people from talking, whether it's somebody you don't wanna hear or somebody you do wanna hear, if everybody's gonna do this, then this meeting serves no purpose. And we'll be done and we'll just leave. We're not gonna do that. We're not, we're better than that, come on.
Yeah, and facilitate or keep this moving.
Man, if inclusion, I'd just like to say I think some of the information that you receive from Arizona is applicable to that ecosystem and not to ours.
And that may be the case, man, that may be the case. So your comment about the rivers is well taken, that's informative and that's what I'm looking for.
Please come to North County and see what she's talking about, don't spend time in Arizona.
Mr. Doyle, I fish of the Elk and Six river.
Then why are you going to Arizona instead of coming here to talk to people like Lori? You know, this is
Next up, please state your name and ask, state your name and ask a question.
I have I have a question, Mr. Doyle, and my my concern is the salvage logging. Um, you know that you you talked some trillions of dollars of loss on these fires? And what's the effort that's being done to salvage those burnt trees? I mean, the needles are gone and do we have any future looking, what's the opportunities for the salvage logging? Is it being done in our county?
It would depend, a and and you may or may not know this, but so don't take any of these as I'm extraing you. But as you know, the trees will begin to blue after with certain circumstances are present that will preclude their use for structural timber. Uh salvage logging, um to that point, um when we suffered through the record-setting wallow fire, we also implemented with the Forest Service plans that ultimately allowed the Apache Six Grease Forest here to set the all-time national record for salvage logging. Now, where much of it goes is if it is not caught before bluing takes effect of the timber, then it needs to go to the pulp industries, the biomass industries, the biochar industry, heating pellet and chip.
Hey, thank you. Here, let's go.
My question with super commissioners, um I assume there's gonna be some legal kickback or pushback on this. Who's gonna pay for that?
So I have actually, based on your question, uh Doyle, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
No, I'm speaking, it's my turn. I love it, Andy, from our commissioners. I lived in Arizona, it's very different than here, I promise. But I'm not interested in what's going on in Arizona.
So if I'm not mistaken, so if I'm not mistaken, Apache County, Arizona had zero litigation.
That's Arizona.
That's Arizona.
That's the same plan we're looking to implement here.
Well,
I'm saying that we won't be tried, but
I I the reason I'm asking that is that this sounds expensive right now. Our federal government's doing it, I have no um input or I'm sorry, I have no way to take that. I have no faith that they're going to have great forests for quite a while, based on what I've seen so far. Um, so we don't even have sheriffs in my area because we don't have the money. The county doesn't have the money. And who's gonna pay for the jobs or the salaries for the people who are gonna do this management? Who's gonna train them?
They're creating their own businesses.
And they all they are.
Working on this in the road.
Yeah, what about, yeah, what about roads?
And and roads is all part of this as well. So that is something that we weren't putting the Forest Service on for the roads.
If you have questions, if you have questions, step up to the podium and ask them, please don't shout them out.
There's no money out.
I'll try to be brief, my name's Clay Knoll, yeah, from Harbor. And uh I just recently tried to get a carport up during the nice dry season. I put in a a simple carport plan to the uh building department back in September. And could have been able to just get that started over the county, but they said, no, it's gotta go to planning first. Well, planning sussed out my plan for four months, cost me over five hundred dollars. Apparently there are no planners in the county already, so they had to ship it out to some other county who, you know, unaccountable to be. And so, you know, I'm not that uh impressed with the effectiveness of local government in taking on big projects, cuz like people said, we don't have enough law enforcement. We don't seem to be, you know, getting our own housing situation in order. So this idea of taking on stewardship with the National Forest, it's a great idea, everybody, we should be more collaborative. You know, I'm in agreement with the idea behind this that we should have more say in what the Forest Service does. Um, I try to comment on lots of stuff the Forest Service does and I'm often disappointed with the lack of response. And I do encourage the county and its citizens to be involved in Forest Service planning. I think collaboration is something that they talk a lot about but don't do very well. And so you may, you know, I don't know what his experience is, I don't really wanna know in Arizona, the whole different ecosystem, politically, socially, environmentally. Uh, again, so one thing to have an idea for a template that uh I've been in Arizona and their forests are not anything like our forests. And the rivers aren't like our rivers, they don't have wild salmon. Uh, we got some treasures here that uh we need to definitely invert the agency. And it's for us, these are global treasures that everybody want wishes they had. And so um, you know, before we get too excited about economic development, all these projects that we're gonna, you know, streamline everything, cut the budget, you know, get rid of the red tape. Uh, it's a lot of work managing land, I have sixty-six acres of my area that keeps me pretty busy. And I got wild salmon, I got trees. And uh I just think, you know, we gotta take a step back. I think instead of having just this kind of presentation, you gotta do something with a more balanced circle of speakers. So that people don't feel like they have to find them in the middle, they're being seen with weight. But uh, you know, the idea is good, cuz you know, we all need to do stewardship, but um if you look at the science, uh fire prevention happens at your doorstep, it's right there to your house, not way out there in the woods. Yep, we wanna protect our forests, our streams from wildfires. Uh, we gotta look seriously about global climate change, you know, these wind driven fires compare what they're doing. If they're gonna get a fire, whether if they had in LA or if they had over there on the I five corridor, these things are um they're otherworldly, you know, we're not gonna be able to cope with that uh by, you know, just stewardship. So we need to keep our communities safe and we need to take long-term view of the forests. And we need bigger trees and cleaner water, I don't know what to go back.
Hi, uh my name's Tabitha, um I live here in Gold Beach, I have a couple of questions. Um, I'm curious how negotiable this county management plan is? And um you mentioned having two staff members for six hundred and fifty thousand acres.
That's that's sort of an idea.
Okay, so it's still negotiable?
We're open, we're open to cooperation, collaboration and and everything.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, when you mentioned that the Forest Service is one hundred percent on board, is that with stewardship agreements that are with the Forest Service or with the wildfire resolutions that you guys were trying to pass?
So that is the idea and of us wanting to move forward with doing some sort of program development with the Forest Service. So your your new items specific will be for a meeting that I will ask her, cuz we're gonna be having another meeting set up here in the very near future.
Okay, are you planning to invite the local forest department?
Of course, you guys are always welcome.
Great, I I was not invited previously, so thank you. Um, I do wanna ask you about the industry because the Forest Service has had several local timber sales go um without bid in the last five years. Um, and so I'm curious if any part of this plan is to incentivize industry to move here because there is not currently enough industry to handle the small woody material coming out of the forest.
Yeah, well, and and again, I'm gonna reference Arizona and what their Forest Service had done down there to be able to do that.
But they don't have nearly the same amount of material that we do, so I think that's a very different.
I understand, but they created different parcels, different sized parcels of land so that not only can maybe a maul and paw firewood operation be able to bid and and work on a particular NIPA, then they would have multi-thousand acre plots as well where the larger mills can bid and be competitive on.
So we are talking about stewardship agreements, that's that's essentially what makes your deal, okay? Um, I wanted to correct you when you said how many employees that the Forest Service has because the Rogue River system is capped at one hundred and thirty-two employees and that forest covers from the California border south all the way to Crater Lake, which is not enough employees to to do all the survey requirements. So to follow up with that, um are you guys?
Sorry, I appreciate that, I must, I have an old data or something.
Yeah, I think a lot of your data is old. And so I do wanna say the CWPP was updated last year. I reached out to you guys with a funding opportunity due at the end of this month, up to ten million dollars to address
Which I got, I've been looking into.
Great, um we're having a meeting on the DTE if anyone is interested in attending that to support rural volunteer fire departments. And so I wanna ask, how have you guys um or how are you planning to support the Forest Service who is already lacking staff and capacity to meet their requirements to um get these projects?
By by opening, by opening the door for private industry to come in and help them.
So this always, this is, I think, the misconception that people don't understand. No matter if you try to do third-party NIPA or self-contract surveys, the Forest Service is still legally required to review those requirements to meet Indian Species Act requirements as well as NIPA. And part of, a huge part of NIPA is the scoping, which as you can see, public involvement has a huge impact on your ability to do anything. So I just, I think that you guys have the par for the course on this and we're creating a lot more um adversity to this proposal than it truly is um because of the way that it's being described to people and the wildfire um kind of emergency resolution.
Yeah.
So if I could give a piece of advice to that, it would be have that plan before you go and tell people, you know, we're gonna sign a resolution.
Yes.
One more question, um and and I it's it's regarding the flat fire and the anthill fire. And I mentioned this in the last meeting that we have been successful at doing treatments to protect communities. Um, there was a significant amount of money given from the incident management team to rent this facility. And I'm curious if any of that three hundred plus thousand dollars has gone to actual homeowner defense or defensible space protection against people's healths?
No, I personally don't know the answer to that question.
The the I I the budgets, so the fairgrounds has their own board and their own budgets. So that would be a question for their board and their and their budget.
Okay. Thank you, I would encourage folks to support the Forest Service also because they have to go through these public processes.
I'm Dakota, I'm a wildfire specialist, I live in this community, I've served on wildfire teams protecting these communities. I work on making wildfire plans and wildfire analysis, things like the twenty twenty-four CWPP um or the twenty seventeen and I guess my biggest question is about the pacing of all of this. The idea of doing this as an emergency declaration, if it's really something that serves this community and it's really something that's in our best interest, feels ridiculous. And to come up here and say something like, it's been fifty years since we've had a wildfire plan, when it's been less than six months since it's been
Some of the some of the statistical data within those plans date back to the nineteen seventies.
Let me stop at first, please. Please save your comments, at least that's begun.
Yeah. There's a lot of ideas in math that were around in the seventies that are still good for us. It feels like there's not enough homework and the way that this thing is being presented to a group of people who are really educated and passionate about their own community with so much blatant misinformation and the presentation felt like a, this is how fireworks one oh one. I still don't really understand how this is better than the current legal infrastructure in which private companies can already contract with the Forest Service. This feels like a huge distraction and I don't feel like rushing this and then even having these informal meetings that are so off-pointing, um feels like something that's serving the community's best interest. So I'm curious why this is happening so fast and why we're not talking about the mechanisms of change that are actually going on. People understand how wildfires, we all want wildfire to be less of a risk. Maybe that's a misassumption, but I feel like generally there's no there's some agreement and some momentum towards the goals that we're talking about, but acting like the change in mechanism from how these funds work from what exists to what you're going to, um it just feels ridiculous to come up here and talk to us about how fireworks and not about how this is actually gonna improve the way that money's spent in this community. Why is it happening here?
Question.
What is the, what is the emergency?
Yeah.
Money, yeah.
Why the emergency?
Winter.
Okay, so um I what I would say is this, the the mistake, um sorry, Dylan, is that right?
Dakota.
Dakota. The the mistake that was made, uh in my opinion, at this point was um the combination of essentially two, two different things, right? Um, there was on one hand, there was the 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 conification of the uh wildfire uh risk assessment map, Centability, okay, the conification of that in January. That was a, that's a different issue, um but came out in the same document as uh the That was uh, that's a different issue, um, but came out in the same document as uh, the, the, the topic that Patrick is discussing. So in my opinion, I think it's, it needs to be separated into two different, um, into two different things to address. Uh, the fire, the, the results of the fire map, um, and Senate Bill eighty, um, it has different, uh, it, it, it's going to require a different direction and, and, and to be addressing than some of the things that, uh, that Patrick is talking about. Granted, in the end, it's all about risk. Um, but the, I think, I think the mistake that was made was adding, adding it to a, a fire map risk assessment issue. Right? And the emergency behind that is that it was codified. And the, the effects of that map are real as of being implemented, uh, as of now. And so I can tell you on that portion, on that portion, uh, the part that I'm, that I'm, I'm trying to uh, educate and push back a little bit um, on is, is that uh, the map um, lacks integrity. Uh, the map itself uh, had no local, um, no local authorities' inputs. Um, it had no uh, no local understanding of, of weather and things of that nature. Um, it was uh, it was put together by an algorithm. Um, I mean, when the map, when the map?
If I have a book, it's ever online.
Yeah, it, yeah, you can find it online, um. So, because this, that was, that was a different topic, but I'm trying to address uh, what this gentleman said about why the rush. So I think the rush happened, um, because we combined two things that shouldn't have been combined.
Yes.
If that makes, if that makes sense. The fire map, in my opinion, the fire map and the codification and the implementation of the fire map is something that I think we need to address now. But I think this portion that he's discussing and all of this, that's gonna, that's gonna take a lot of coordination. And I think Tabitha hit a lot, it, it's, I, I, well, I think Tabitha understands a lot of what we are discussing in terms of, um, the, the rollout does not exactly describe the intention. And it was probably rolled out incorrectly to describe that intention. The, the, I don't, I don't believe, at least it's not my opinion, but anyone uh, wants to uh, wants to damage any of our natural resources. I think what we really want to do is examine if we can, if we can present or be a player, a coordinated player in this process to represent all of, all of us in mini, in minimizing the damage that has been occurred. Right? In terms of mega fires, right? Things, things of that nature. If we can work to, to, to be a, a, a participating partner in those plans to mitigate those things. And I think, I mean, we, the goal would be to work with uh, everyone in here, the tribes, every, all, all of our stewards, um, to create, uh, or at least have, uh, have an identifiable path to help prevent some of those things in the future. So that was a long answer to why the rush, but I, I think our mistake, the mistake that was made was combining two things into one that wasn't necessary uh, to do so.
My name is Bob Marle. I'm a longtime resident of Langlois, Curry County. Um, the rollout, I just want to speak to that very briefly, has been stealth. The November meeting where this gentleman on the screen gave a hundred and forty-three power, page, page is a PowerPoint presentation. Had a short little piece in the agenda that said veritas education. That was it. And it was this that was being presented. There was no information for citizens, and obviously everybody has a lot of concern for this topic. The meeting that you had last week in Brookings, it was changed at the last minute, because I was planning to drive down, but they don't drive at night, not that far. So I didn't come down. Last minute change, the agenda I was put in at the last moment buried in G.
Page one oh three.
Page one oh three to one oh nine. Hey, let's get everybody involved. You don't know what this is gonna be about. But look at all the people that showed up despite that stealth approach. The rollout has not been forthcoming. It's not as honest as it should be. If you truly work for the citizens and not some other organization, then you should be in the forefront.
Well, I want, I want to do this panel on that. We're here today.
Finally.
Right? We're, we're like, we, no, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. If it was as stealthy as, as just being described, we could have voted on that.
It was emotional.
We didn't, there, the idea to have today's meetings was to address exactly what you just said. And now that we're here addressing it, we're gonna be criticized for addressing it? I don't understand that part.
And I, and I've already started putting this plan for this meeting together before last week's VOC meeting.
Yes, and in, in the death by PowerPoint you gave us today, brought us with forestry one oh one. And you're going to put it on his website instead of the county website.
The suggestion most.
That should be information for the citizens of Curry County.
Right.
That's where these information should be. My email that I sent to the last meeting that was not read when I was told it was going to be, is not even presented in today's agenda. It's not there. And apparently, there were a number of people like me who gave comments and emails from North Curry County that we have not seen. Those positions and some that were in favor, some that were opposed to this. They should all be in the public record on the county website. Look, you guys need to stop drinking the Kool-Aid that's coming in from Arizona with its oil. Fine print on that can you're drinking out of, it's just a can of worms. You look, so, my question really boils down to what my dad always told me was to follow the money.
Yeah, yeah.
So how is it this is going to work for Curry County? The first place I start looking is how much money did the county lose with the Pacific High School horse farm that we have going? How much money was going to set up a management of a federal forest? Mr. Alcorn, you were at the side of the firefighters in the Sixes Grange, listening to the updates last year. And you know the intense amount of management, project management that goes into making that reality of all those resources. And now I'm hearing that you three are gonna take that over, make that happen, and the next large fire.
That's, that's not what's being said here. That's not our, that's not what's being said. And yes, I was in every fire meeting, I attended every one.
And thank you for that.
Okay, and I also want to point out, none of us voted, none of us voted for any of those trees we fed down. We weren't in that office.
Truth, but they were all still standing and the contract had been signed. And yet they came down, we had piles upon piles that had to be moved, we have.
And we couldn't do anything about, you understand?
And they're supposed to be replanted.
Yes.
It has not happened.
And they will be.
And we're apparently, if the timing is sucks, that you're on the verge of getting penalized for not having replanted.
And, and.
And that's on your watch.
That is, and they will be.
And there was supposed to be a, a submission for a grant to have housing in that north lot that was going to be there for, for the teachers. There were three opportunities for the county, and that was not submitted.
Sir, he's finished, look, finished, okay?
Still, and that's still in progress.
When is it, when is it going to be?
I don't have an answer to that, but it's still in progress.
The timing I understood was that it's long since passed the deadline.
I, I don't have an answer right now, I don't know, but I know that it's still in progress.
But to get back to my question, uh, what I would like to hear from you is follow the money. We talked about the high school, we've talked about the federal forest. I'd like to know how much the expertise for your plan for management is going to cost? What is the timeline, five, ten, fifteen years? Show me the back of an envelope with some math on it. So at least I have a sense of what the cost of this already broken county is going to be. How many bids are gonna be a minimum bid? Heard that zero bids are coming in. Are we gonna give it away to the one person that bids? How much of this, is this consultant here costing us? That's the money I want, how much? How much for the week-long trip to Arizona?
I, well, I, I bet you that out of my own pockets.
Thank you, that's good to hear. That's what we need. Appreciate that support. So where is the money going? Who are the current stakeholders? How much are they costing us? What is the present value versus the future value? And what about grants money? The United States right now has no grant money available to anybody. And we're talking about it tonight, it's a thing that's available to you, so please answer. Follow the money. Where is it going?
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tim Scullin, and I appreciate this opportunity to comment on this thing. I'm glad you all have made this opportunity available to us. I appreciate the jobs you are, are faced with as county commissioner. I would not want to trade places for you. And I would like to do anything in the world to help you solve the problem we have in this county. This is not the way to do it, in my opinion. Uh, a little bit of background, uh, we've only been here for like a hundred and eighty years. A hundred and eighty years ago, there were Indians walking around here who regularly set fire at the forest every year, who seemed to understand the way the ecosystem worked. Now, I hate to be want to tell you this, but this forest was born to fire, needs fire. The only way to kill a forest is without fire, but it is adapted to fire. Now, we are constantly moving towards a state of acidification, our heavy rainfall, the conifers, soil gets more acid. The fire comes, changes it to alkaline. We have this balance going back and forth, which keeps the forest healthy. If you doubted this, I see we have uh, Dr. Ed Dross, former soil scientist for this forest in the audience. He may be able to enlighten you further on this. Uh, some years ago, when I worked for the Forest Service, we had what we called the Long-Term Ecosystem Productivity Program. So plots were created out in the forest, one was not cut, one was clear-cut, one was thin. Uh, amazingly, uh, not long after, the Biscuit Fire came. Now, some of these plots, lo and behold, the untreated sections were the ones where the trees survived. The mass amounts of brush underneath, putting off so much steam that it cooled the overstory and allowed the larger trees to live. Amazing how nature works. This is not Arizona. You know, I'm interested in what's happening in Arizona. It has no application here for this ecosystem. So sadly, everything is gonna burn eventually, no matter what we do, and there's a reason for that. That's how this forest adapted. Um, I have zero confidence in this plan. Um, I wish you all would go direct your attention to other things to solve the problems, the many problems we face in this county. This is going the wrong direction, this is a waste of time. And uh, like I said, I'd be willing to do anything else in the world to help you all. I voted on all the tax things we've had the last ten years. But uh, it's tough, it's a tough job. Uh, trying to think that we're gonna milk money out of the federal forest around here is, is not the way to go.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks for gathering, it's all here, and thank you all for coming out. I know I spent plenty of time meeting, so. Everybody knows that this meeting's going on. I know you're really swamped. I'm disappointed I have to see you do a little email or a little phone call, because I have reached out to you guys, working on this. I've heard a lot of really great commentary here tonight, today. I want you guys to consider this, think about how to move forward. Uh, I'm not even gonna get into the details of forestry or that, not my bailiwick, but a lot of really smart, educated, involved, knowing people here. I think we overlooked that resource greatly, and I've spoken to it, to commissioners long before any of you were sitting in these seats. Confidence and trust with us people is really where you, you guys are gonna move ahead. I'm concerned with this presentation, much in the way that we were presented with the sheriff's levy last year. Here's the plan, hope you like it, vote on it, because otherwise we're not getting the sheriff. So I'm kinda hearing the same thing here. Here's the plan that we put together. And we had a presentation that Commissioner Hollinger, that was a little dry for some of us, informative. Informative, but might not be the best place for that. I just want to encourage you, take the time to get the buy-in from the community on these issues. I think you could have passed the sheriff's levy. If you would not do it, we filed today to get it on the ballot, and now it's on the ballot, you gotta vote for it. So, same time, same deal. It might take a couple of years, and I'll put the sheriff's levy in that too. It might take two or three years for you to get the buy-in from the community, but you gotta get out and sell it to us. We need to be part of the plan and feel like we had a dog in the fight and some skin in the game. So I just want to encourage you to consider that while you're working. I do want to point out that the, the rush that we've all seen in this, of the emergency rush, is budgetary purely. Mr. Alcorn, you were clear about that in, in the meeting last Wednesday night. You're feeling pressured, and I appreciate the, the feeling of pressure that you have, to protect our communities through law enforcement. We all think that's an important thing. But let's just be clear, this is a budgetary rush, and we've got budgetary difficulties, and you've gotta bridge that. So, again, I just want to say, these are the people that live in the county. We are concerned about this, you're a part of us as well. You've just been elected to be our, our representatives in this. So please take the time to reach out to us. Look at what you can do. If you've got something that you want to get taken care of, you can pull a bunch of people like this. There are more people that would show up too, if this was a different time and place. I'll leave you with that, just my thoughts. I'm not gonna dig into the details, like I said, because there are a lot of people here way smarter and more informed than I am. So I'll leave you with that. And anything I can do to help you, I do have some ideas of how you might look forward at doing some taxing in the county. Again, you're gonna need the buy-in from the citizens to make that happen. But those of us that are using the services should pay for the service. That's just my thought. And taxing can be patriotic. This is our county, it's our state and our country, we should be taking care of it. That's patriotism when we hold ourselves together as a community and as a country. So I'll leave you with that, thank you.
Thank you, I'm Jordan Thompson. I live way up in Chaco. Um, we have a court case that says that uh, my ancestors were the original title holder of this land. And it's basically Curry County, that's the two things in the Chacos. So we have been here for a while, our roots run deep. Um, I'd like to address your uh, thing a day on the emergency, on the um, a resolution that you guys kind of smis together with the state and the FED. Um, I would like to see that wildfire risk map that the state put out by a algorithm, whatever you wanna call it. I'd like to see it rescinded in Curry County and create our own wildfire risk map. Because our, our risks are entirely different than what that map showed. And if anybody wants to see, I can show you the risk that we have here in Curry County from wildfires. This is a map, a wildfire map, and it shows way back from the Silver Fire, the uh, all the way up to the Chaco Bar Fire. I live approximately here. Here's the border, Brookings, Thistle River, Gold Beach, Agnes. This, this is the county office wilderness area. This is what burns, and it comes out, and you can see it's, it's changed ecologically because it's burned how many times has it been burnt in there? As an indigenous person, I think we should be. As an indigenous person, I think we should be making a plan for our forests. I totally agree. But it was an oak savanna when y'all got this here. Uh, so, let's, let's kind of try to go back to then, do the burning, as Tim said. I think we need to, in my personal opinion. Get our prairies back here and get them consistently be in burn to, to mitigate when it comes out of the wilderness area, to stop it from coming to the communities. So my, my ask is that we create a ballot measure or something, so that all of these people can vote on that wildfire risk map that the state put out. So, uh, because it's based on a model, it's not based on facts that we have here. The other one is, um, the Forest Service. When the Chaco Bar Fire happened. I, my family was in it. We probably have all of the legal. Things for the, the federal lawsuits that's going on, on that. So I understand, but we have to work with the Forest Service. I have to work with it. I'm obligated from my ancestors to my grandkids' grandkids. That we have to protect the forest. So I think, for me, I would like to see you show your two resolutions. Let's work with the community. And let's all be better. We can all be better here. And do better, and do better for the community. So, that's all I have to say.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Angela Lycett. I'm here today as the president of the County Office of Audubon Society. Our group has more than four hundred members in Curry County. Who care about habitat for birds, fish, and wildlife. Just to be clear, we're people, um, our members are people who are from old families. There are members, or people who just showed up. There's a very diverse group of people who really care about our public lands, our forests, and our rivers. And our forests, as you've heard, are really productive, not only for trees, but because of the rivers and salmon, and then so much, um, that we have. But, um, I think you've heard that there's a lot of people, probably in this room, are, are actually natural resource professionals who. Because this is a natural resource place, there are people who do a lot of stuff, and you can hear, hear some of the groaning, um, during the presentation. So I think, um, it is important to realize that. This idea that our place is very special and the information that is being presented doesn't feel right to a lot of people, not, um, so just wanna put that out there. But what I wanna do is ask you my question, which is, um. You know, I came, I'm, I'm just kinda confused still at this presentation about what actually we're planning to do here, because. I, you know, came and asked you earlier, uh, Commissioner Hollinger, last winter or in December, what, what is this? And you said, go to that website, County Strong, and on that website, there's stuff about Tenth Amendment lawsuit, which you mentioned. There's stuff about seeking conveyance, federal legislation to convey lands from, um, the county to federal government to the county. And Tenth Amendment lawsuit would be taking federal lands to ownership. Then there's also something you sent me that was about like the Enclave Act, which also seemed like it was about taking over ownership of public lands. And then when I went onto that website, there's all sorts of stuff about all these things. And then there's also stuff about, you know, how, I mean, if you go through it, there's all sorts of stuff in there, and things about like maybe how the migratory bird act might be a. You know, bad because it's international, even though it's been in place for over, uh, a hundred years to try to protect birds. But, um, so I'm just, I still don't understand, and then also the language of your resolution says constitutional management, exert that, exert unilateral. Uh, control. So you're here telling us today that it's all gonna be collaborative in this, but all the language and some of the things you told me, you also mentioned to me when we talked, when I was just trying to understand this. Because I'm here also, I really appreciate the opportunity to learn. Um, and I do think there is a genius to the crowd of. And I think at this time, when you don't listen to each other, and you really, it's good to listen to each other, because I think different people bring different pieces of, um, things that are important. But you mentioned to me the idea of cutting the swath of, of fire break along the front side of the, the west side of the national forest, um. Not necessarily along roads, but along the edge, and. So I still just don't really understand what the, what you're really thinking, and how it's gonna make the county revenue, because all of the costs that are involved in this. And like, if the county takes over the management, you know, like, you guys know, like, the county insurance, you know, like, that pays for your liability. Who's gonna be liable if you guys are managing it instead of the Forest Service? Right now, they cover all the costs, and. I think a lot of us wish that things were done a little bit better in many respects. But if we had to take over the cost of management and the liabilities. I don't really see how that adds up to us getting revenue. And finally, it just seems like any governmental body. Should be approaching something first by doing a feasibility study that looks at, is this feasible? What are the costs and benefits? What are the pros and cons? That kinda thing, in a transparent way. Um, so that we can really understand it. And I, I just think that that would be very helpful to you. Because we really, I'll just think to myself, I, like Tim Scullin said, I really want you guys to succeed. We want Curry County to succeed. We want to address fire risk. And so, um, I have reservations that this is the best way. I agree that I'm concerned this is a major distraction that's gonna take us down our aisle. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Martin. I live out here in Bull Beach. Um, thank you for holding this meeting and giving us an opportunity to come out and express our concerns and ask questions. I do appreciate it. No, you get my home, but it's your job, it's what you're here to do. Um, I think by just looking around the room, a lot of residents have been caught flat-footed by this rush job. Um, I emailed all three of you with my concerns and suggestions for funds that have been available forever, since the State Bar Marshal has had funds available. We have not once in thirteen years ever applied for FireWise or Fire Convention funding. So, congrats to you. Do that, please. We would love to see the FireWise program managed in our county. I'm not done with it. Thank you. Um, you know, we got new, the tsunami maps for our tsunami evacuation maps several years ago, and local Peters ran around with their hair on fire then too. And we haven't seen the, um, direct cost to residents from the, uh, from those map updates, so just good for thought. Just wanna, um, Patrick, you specifically, maybe I'll move back and ask me not to believe the false narratives. And I am here to say that I believe the language in your declaration, resolution, is a false narrative. Because you're stating in that document that homeowners and landowners will be, have cost prohibitive increases. Whether it's insurance premiums or whatever, right? And I called the Forest Service Map Division and asked, and was told that in the packet that you all received, there's zero language about enforcement or teeth. You got information. You don't like it, fix it, change it, fight it, listen to Jerry Lynn. Do that. But don't jam down our throat some hair-on-fire emergency that doesn't exist right now. Earlier, earlier in your presentation, you talked about. We said that you're basing this decision on a model that's been, um, applied in Pacha County in Arizona. You also said it's been rolled out across the country. What other counties are doing this in the country? Would we be number two? Are we a test?
And I'll.
I don't wanna be number two. When you have, how many counties are in the United States?
No.
I don't know. When you have, I don't know, fifteen, twenty, and it's been five or ten years, and we see our data that says this works, then come back to us and ask.
I would like to actually give, uh, Doyle an opportunity. Go ahead, go ahead.
Good afternoon, again, commissioners. Uh, my name is Clark Pasurik. I live north of Fort Orford. And I am deeply invested in this issue. I spend a lot of time in our national forests, and it is the primary reason why I lived and worked in Curry County. Uh, I took off work to be here, and I know a lot of other people who could not, who would have liked to have attended. I encourage you to hold your meetings and workshops in a more democratic time moving forward. Uh, I am not by any means a PhD or a working, uh, forest manager, but I do hold a minor in environmental science for Lehigh University, and I think that this plan is rushed and inappropriate for our ecosystem. Uh, I recognize that there are two separate issues, the first being the fire map, and I wanted to bring to your attention, in case it was not yet on your radar, that Senate Bill seven six two. Uh, has an amendment which would adjust the fire maps and reduce the level of granularity. I encourage you all to contribute to that process. Uh, to help make sure that Curry County is represented in the update. Utah, last month, uh, lost a court case in which they attempted to take federal land under their jurisdiction. Uh, Supreme Court declined to even hear them out. It cost the state of Utah five hundred thousand dollars that this county does not have, that I am concerned about the fiduciary responsibility of pursuing. Hasty plans that will put us in legal jeopardy. Uh, it is my opinion that the county has more important problems to solve than railroading us into an Arizona-based forestry model. That breaks trust and goodwill among your neighbors during a delicate time for the county in general. Uh, I urge you to pause until you can get community buy-in and develop a grassroots forest plan, rather than following a model coming forth from Arizona. My final question for you as a commission, uh. Is how much taxpayer money, uh, is budgeted for defensive potential lawsuits related to the forest plan, should they arise?
Set aside money for, for that? I, I couldn't tell you.
My, my final closing comment is that it is my personal feelings that I would prefer it if Doyle Shandley stayed in Arizona, and had nothing to do with our forests here in Oregon. Thank you.
My name's Ken Olson, I live in Brookings, and, um, my personal opinion is I think that. You're probably chasing windmills thinking you're gonna get any management, um, influence over a federal government, um. Forest Service is gonna do what they're gonna do, the BLM is gonna do what they're gonna do. Um, but I wanna go back to Jake saying that he had separated the two issues, and I think that's a real emergency here, and that is the fire problem. And I wanna know if you guys have any information from insurance carriers on what the projected non-renewal rate. For people who are living in the highest-risk zones, and if someone who lives in that zone goes to sell their property. Will they, insurance companies not provide fire insurance to the new owners? And I think that's affecting a bunch of people in this room. And, and in our county, which is unique, is we know where the fires start. It's a natural park, it's, it's what our forests thrive on. But we know where they come from, and we know when the wind blows which way they go, and we know how they travel mostly, we can track those. And I think the Forest Service, and they obviously have changed their management plans on forest suppression in the last forty years. And I would assume that there's some obligation if they're going to have that management when it jumps outside their boundaries, that there is some. Help for people who are living in those red zones, because part of their management strategy is why they're in it. So, you guys have any insurance, any input from insurance companies on what the non-renewal rate's gonna be, and how are we going forward with that? Because I think that's big.
So, can I ask? Um, so Ken, here's, uh, here's some of what I, what I know so far. Um, we're, we are currently sitting at about a five percent non-renewal. Uh, that is just as of right now, right? Um, that will change. So Josephine County is sitting closer to a twenty percent non-renewal. And just south of them, they're at forty percent non-renewal. And so as this shifts to our area, um, we will see, uh, uh, most likely a substantial rise. In those non-renewals, um, getting closer to, uh, to Josephine County and south. So that is, uh, one of the biggest concerns, obviously, um, with the fire map. Um, and, uh, I will say, um, I, I was, uh. I was the commissioner that was identified to be, uh, the representative, speaking to, um, when we had listening sessions on the fire map. Um, the concerns that I brought up were, were, um, concerns I think probably everybody here would share, um, in terms of the fidelity of the map. The lack of, um, utilization of, of our weather patterns, um, not acknowledging the fact that we have a marine layer. Um, not, um, acknowledging the, the, the fire history. Uh, if you were to look at Jerry Lynn's map, um, you will see that, uh, it, it, the, the, if she, can I, can I use your map real quick? So some of the things that I, that we want to, I think that is necessary to address, uh, with the fire map and its lack of, of, of fidelity. Is, so this is the list of all the fire, all the fires that overlaid each other since nineteen eighty-seven. But if you notice, this, so right here, this is the Chaco Bar Fire, so, and the, the coast comes out here. The, the, our marine layer, the three-mile marine layer has not been penetrated. And if you take this map, I found another outfit, you can go back to nineteen hundred to present. It still does not penetrate our marine layer, where ninety-five percent of our citizens live. Yet, the map, as identified by the state of Oregon. Does identify all of this as areas where you are at, at high risk for, uh, non-renewal insurance, increased rates. And, uh, the, the new, uh, building and planning, uh, code expectations. So that's what we're really trying to push back on in terms of the, the fidelity of the fire map and bringing, and I think what Jared hit on with this portion. Is extremely valuable. I think what we need to do is we need to push back, we'll look at, uh, what preliminarily, I met, well, so I met with Jared, isn't a self-disclosure, we've discussed this at length. One of the things that we can look at is, uh, number one, creating our own map. That has much more fidelity and actually does show where the risks are, and that, is that, that if insurance companies are gonna use it. That's one that actually has some merit.
How much you back on?
We already have all the information. Like, like, fire history is well documented. We don't have to go too far to identify all of that. Right, so, okay, so I, I think if I addressed that, and it was a mistake, right? It was a mistake. So we, that's what we're working towards. Um, the other piece of that is, uh, yes, do we need to look at, uh, essentially a future ballot title, much like. Uh, what happened with the windmills, and get consensus on whether or not we want to create our own fidelity, our own map that has more. Uh, that has more actual data and, and, and is accurate. Um, that may be the route to go. So, Ken, your points are, are clear, yes. Uh, we currently, we're at a five percent non-renewal. Uh, our, our sister county is at twenty percent. That will bleed over. We are gonna be looking at those higher levels of renew, non-renewals. Um, but what I would do is say, and I, and I hope that if, if this is presented out. Um, if you do, if, if you are faced with a non-renewal, or you are faced with, uh, insurance premiums that are skyrocketing to a point where you cannot afford them. Please reach out to me. I would be happy to try to work with you. I did, there was a scenario where a, a, um, a insurance company. Dropped the member, Commissioner Alcorn, who lives in the city limits. Who, his house was in the city limits of Brookings. He was dropped on his insurance because his wildfire assessment score was identified as too high. We were able to send that to the state to hold, that company was progressive. Hold them accountable. But if, so, and, and the thing is, is a lot of people have been, been getting hit with this recently, and they think that they're a one-off. Or it's a special case. It's not always the case. If you do, or your neighbor, or you know somebody who is facing those things. Please ask them to reach out to me, and we will try to work them through identifying the best way to address that, um, moving forward.
So I wanna follow up on what Commissioner Dross said. First of all, Jerry Lynn, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
First of all, Jerry Lynn, I agree with you wholeheartedly, pushing back and fighting against that fire map, one hundred percent, you're you're on point. And also, Mr. Tros, these are two, there are two different issues here that should have been separated. I I I largely agree with that as well. And I guess I I wanna I I wanna follow up on what Jay said, and I wanna comment on on Ken's question. So, um, and yes, I was affected by by that map personally. But if we're at five percent, our adjoining county is at twenty percent, and another is at forty percent, and you're on a fixed income, and you own your property, and you're getting hit with these costs, and you may lose your property. Is that an emergency?
That's not what the rest of the world says, though.
Again, I'm trying to separate the two out, I'm not talking about anything.
Two out and come back and adjust to the one.
Yes, and that that should be the plan, man. You're correct.
That's all I, that's my opinion, that's all I'm trying to say. Because if you're that person who's on that fixed income and owns that property, and you're faced with these additional costs that you can't afford, to me, that's an emergency.
So, uh, you want to comment, one more thing on the on the on the fire map um issue. Um, one of the issues, one of the biggest issues that I have, that we had with the map, and this was continuous across all the counties, was the fact that um even if you take the precautions, even if you follow the 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 suggested routes of creating defensible space and and enveloping your home with non-flammable materials, hardened board, metal roofs, metal cutters, et cetera, which are the current, that will be the implemented building and planning codes going forward, even if you do all those things, it does not affect your rating per the map. And they have made that, they have made that known, right? And so that's another area that is not, it's 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 just, it's not good, it's not good governance. And that's what, one of the things that we really wanna be pushing back on as well, is that, yes, you should be rewarded if you are taking the time to create defensible space, and you are doing the things that assist firefighters when they show up to your house, if there is a fire that's coming and encroaching on your place. You should, you should not be penalized regardless of what you do then. So those are other areas that we're really looking to push back on um with that, with the with the the fire map uh assessment.
My name's Kim Foster, for Orford. I was also here the last week, so B O C meeting. Um, and I'll try not to tread the same ground, but I came here today to debate, and I wasn't kind of commenting at all. I was just gonna give y'all a list of ideas. I was gonna give you guys a list of revenue ideas as an olive branch, because I thought this was a workshop. Um, but now I'm, I'm incandescent. That agenda item for the February fifth meeting last week was a last-minute addition, only discovered because somebody was on the county website looking for the workshop information for this day. Instead, they discovered on January thirty-one, five days ago, these emergency resolutions were on the agenda. And what the agenda says in black and white, anyone can see on page one oh three, y'all set twenty minutes for discussion and had suggested motions to approve both resolutions, that now we're just sort of like, oh, we shouldn't have put them together, but you had suggested motions on that agenda. So, did you just not think anyone would notice? And is this workshop today, is this a legal requirement that you're just checking the box and it's an afterthought, you didn't think anyone would come? I'm glad we're here, I am. But what really grinds my gears is y'all already made up your mind in this for Shandly without us. That's what it feels like, prove me wrong. But unfortunately, black and white, the agenda for February fifth shows differently. And I get it, we are a deeply impoverished county, the math is ugly, it's not good, the math ain't mathin', as the kids say. The elephant in the room is the reason our property taxes are so low in Curry County is because the county used to reap a lot of revenue from logging. I get it, logging went away, people stayed poor, and property taxes now can't be raised without literally driving folks on low incomes to homelessness. That's a problem, y'all know that. And there's an incredibly valid concern that working-class people need jobs, they need to eat, they need to afford the roof over their heads. The county needs to continue to provide basic functions. Uh, and I can't do that if the majority of population is, you know, on a fixed income, or underemployed in seasonal jobs, or unemployed entirely, which is not enough business, I get it. But you folks clearly need to diversify the local economy to avoid the pitfalls of going all in on one big industry. But you also clearly have no experience around how to do that, so you're relying on people like Doyle. Rather than finding intelligent crowdsourcing, intelligent twenty-first century solutions, twenty-first century problems, and trying these bold legally risky strategies to roll back the clock to the glory days, not realizing or caring about the nuances and the risks of that strategy. Organic Act and B S A C do not give counties the authority to take over federally managed land, they simply state that states retain the rights. And federal courts have consistently ruled that land management authority remains with federal agencies unless Congress explicitly delegates it. See Cleb versus New Mexico of nineteen seventy-six, if you haven't read that, I have it with me here. Any attempts by Curry County to take control of federally managed lands without congressional approval is potentially unconstitutional. That puts us in a bind, and gets us asked the question, being that Utah lost a similar effort one month ago, how much money we got for this? Where's the budget? Where's the line item? I'd like to see it. So my whole feeling today, after listening to all this, and you're walking back this, you know, emergency, great. Wildfire state emergencies overblown, as Professor X said, Senate Bill seven sixty-two, write it down. Senate Bill seven sixty-two, look it up. Is our opportunity to correct these extremely valid issues? You mentioned needing to find, you know, to incorporate the marine layer. Absolutely valid. Um, that's our opportunity to to update the map at a state level, maybe we do something and and homebrew it ourselves, fabulous. Um, but it also seems that our local firefighters would prefer we pursue actual fire risk mitigation strategies. Maybe we train up our youths on sustainable forestry, then burn. Um, maybe we support, you know, homeowners getting grants for home hardening, there's a lot that we can do already today. In short, the federal land stewardship and privatization strategy is not the long-term budget fix you think it is. In fact, it may actually make our short-term budget woes worse, we have a costly litigation that we don't have budgeted. Y'all have a valid initiative for public safety levy in May that could be compromised if we ruin the goodwill of your constituency. Focus on that, focus on what's important. And a better strategy to address our budget shortfall could be, just saying, could be to pursue more diverse and distributed revenue sources instead of this hail mary. I have a list, still.
Uh, my name is Jared Gesska, I live between Fort Orford and Gold Beach. Um, and I just wanna thank you all for having me today. Yes, everything everybody else here said, I can say it better. Uh, I guess I have a third question. So, is the second resolution not assuming jurisdictions over the lands? Does that seem to be clear?
We're not taking over any ownership of federal lands.
So what is it seeking to do then?
How come the county's strong website has all that stuff? That's, I never got my question answered.
So, so the county's strong website has a lot of that stuff. So, the county's strong website has a lot of that um constitutional and um and and federal law uh statements on them. Um, not only to kind of give us some background onto uh what states um can do, what local governments can do, but also in regards to some of the other larger projects that Mr. Shandly is working on at a national level with Washington, D.C. So, so a lot of that is information for us to review. It may not all pertain to everything we're trying to do here, but it's just a source of information that we can, we can do homework on.
But what are we trying to?
So, the question is, what are you seeking to do with the resolution in your eyes? Are you seeking, are you taking jurisdiction? Are you taking, are you seeking to take jurisdiction in federal lands?
I am seeking, I am seeking to hold the federal agencies accountable to cooperate and collaborate with the local government under the law.
Okay. But it's, it seems to to be in the first resolution that you're seeking a claim on the, like, the jurisdiction of the land. And then you're using the second one to provoke these agencies to pull you, us, back for work that you're going to do with the plan that doesn't exist. Is that correct?
So, so the plan we're hoping to create is very much going to be a plan that is agreed upon and worked on with the agencies, collaboratives, stakeholders, members, et cetera.
Okay, so the first resolution is not seeking to take jurisdiction over the federal lands?
We are not seeking to take over the federal lands.
Okay, have you?
We are looking to hold the federal agency.
So then, and and the first one is basing an emergency off legislation, and then it's uh essentially asserting that it will not comply with state law. So have you, have you sort of consulted with D O J I R S on either of these two resolutions? It's a, it's available to you as our commissioners in the state of Oregon. You get any, any feedback from that, or do you just go by counsel here?
There's been no, not, at least from my end, there's been no communication of the D.
So you, you are basing it that there's been zero lawsuits in Arizona, that there won't be any legal challenges here, so?
There there very well may be legal challenges here, and again, there's no plan that is set in stone today. There is no plan set in stones today.
Okay, so, and also, you're aware that if you, if you uh claim an emergency here, and you've asked the governor to to announce a state of emergency, that removes all of your authority, and all of this is moot, right? You understand that the governor would preempt any of your decisions if if they declare a state of emergency here. You will be thankfully removed from the process, and someone else will come in and do this. Are you aware of that? Because you have it in your resolution. Uh, the, to to issue a recall, I think it's ten percent of the vote, and I think one at four hundred. I was thinking about who signs these resolutions, and if in the first, that that gets a recall for that.
Yep, that's right.
What's your name, where are you from?
My name, my name is Jonathan.
Uh, so my name's Kelly, and I live here in Gold Beach, and I just wanted to make a quick point that there are a couple people in the room. I appreciate the town hall, like, I think it's really great to hear from anybody, everybody, but I also would urge to continue the workshop with stakeholders also that you have on federal lands, I think that's a really smart thing to do if you want to continue the conversation. The people that are not in this room are the Forest Service, so look around. No one from the Forest Service is here, and yes, you said Jackie said Jackie is not the local Forest Service. Jackie has told the local Forest not to engage with you. Local and regional office here are told not to attend this meeting. So I would urge you to not agree with the, Jackie's a hundred percent on board, and I would say to work with the local office, because those are people who are born and raised here, who walk this ground all the time, and fully understand it. The other person who maybe is in the room, but I haven't seen it yet, is private timber. So they're on the other side of this conversation as well, and they are really important to have at this table, too. Do they have the capacity? You know, there might be a reason there's only one mill in town right now, so I'm just saying, there are really important voices that are a piece of the management puzzle. We're also working in that landscape, too, we're putting millions of dollars out on public lands to increase habitats and do all that kind of stuff, so. I would just say to really make sure you're talking to those guys and not the above office. It would be like if you just had the governor speaking for you all the time, and I'm sure you wouldn't like that, so.
Yeah, she wanted me specifically to start the conversations with her, and then they will, as as a plan progresses, there will definitely be the local and local.
Yeah, but you can't, I think that's, she doesn't look here, I don't know Jackie, Jackie's somewhere else. You need to talk to these people, I understand there's a chain of command, and there's that going on, but these people know what's happening on the ground, so I would really urge you, Kelly, to and all of you guys, to bring these guys into the pool.
They were all invited.
They cannot come.
Hello, Commissioners, I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you today. Um, this can't be easy, um, my, uh, two questions. First one, if after hearing the last two meetings, and hearing all these people make comments, mostly it seems like against this idea, are you willing to uh withdraw those resolutions? And not consider, consider them at this time?
No.
Why not?
See, we want to see further information, keep talking to poor people. Sorry. Um, my opinion, where I stand would be, would be none. Um, I'm always in wanting to further educate myself, continue these conversations with people, to find what will be the best solution going forward, and the best agreed-upon solution going forward. So am I willing to just put the brakes on everything right now just because of this town, one town hall meeting? Absolutely.
Okay, I just urge you to consider that.
Sure.
Maybe just grind over that for a bit. The second comment or question I would like to make is, Oregon has been generating revenue um from a a process that is pretty old at this time. Um, things have changed in the state of Oregon. We have a lot more visitation, a lot more conservation, a lot more outdoor recreation, those are things that I am involved in. And I don't know if I actually told you, I'm Dave Lacy, I've been here for thirty years, I went to Golden, so, sorry about that, I got to later. Um, one consideration I just wanted to throw out there for raising revenue, because this whole thing seems to be about our impending bankruptcy as a county, and I know this isn't your fault. You guys came into this, this has been going on for a while, a long time, I'm not blaming you.
Well, Dave, real quick, two separate issues. The fire map has no, it it only has net negative economic impacts for our county.
I don't like the map either.
So, that's a separate issue, so, you know, like, um, if you, uh, so anyways, I apologize.
Yes, yeah, I think.
We combined them on, and so I can understand how it's, you know, it's.
Yeah, I don't think anyone here probably likes that. I would be surprised if anyone here really likes that map, so. Uh, most of us are here about the other side of this story. One thing you might think about, if you can, is the biggest landowner, aside from the federal government. There's about five or six, there's, there's big timber investment management organizations, these are private timber companies. They do not live here, they live in Germany, they live in Zial, or somewhere else. They don't have families here, properties here, they're beholden to their investors and um making profits.
South Coast, South Coast is very local.
Yes, they're the one that is local.
Okay, so don't, don't, this is not them.
Here we are, here, I'm not done, can I finish?
Okay.
Um, they pay a very small fraction of the property taxes that we do as landlords in this town. Very, very small compared to private. Um, possibly consider amping that up a little bit to bring it into the more modern times for Oregon. Maybe we can get some more money from these giant companies, and maybe you can carve out an exemption in that for companies that provide access for hunting, fishing, outdoor recreation projects. Maybe they, on those pieces of property, they don't have to make this increase, because that is something that is really important to this area. Um, maybe you can exempt South Coast lumber, because all those people live here, they all work here, they, the ownership is here. I'm fine with that, because Rainier, Wirehauser, uh, Sierra Forest Products, the Church of Latter Day Saints, big investment, uh, investments from, uh, some of the tribals, uh, tribes in different areas from California, they own land here. Consider maybe just upping that, that's all, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, glad you're here, I've learned a lot. I didn't know what I was walking into, but uh, I did hear at the beginning of the presentation, we want, you know, we we could get our land back, we can get our forests back, because the feds own so much of our forests. Well, they happen to be within the boundaries of Oregon, the state of Oregon. But when when the citizens of of Oregon before us, Oregon petitioned to join the union, they said, well, what can we do? Can we join? Sounds like a pretty good club to join. So the the feds come back and said, if you do this, 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 and this, you can join. And one of those disses was to follow their maps that that would be forest land, public land. This is before we were a state. And so we, they agreed, signed on the dotted line. And this is what we have now. We never owned that forest. It was, we gave that up to join states, we are forefathers. So I just wanted to be clear that everybody understands that. So then secondly, what's not really been spoken about today? Because we're talking about fire and and the dangers and insurance. Um. It's it's um, what am I doing, okay? It's global warming, manmade global warming. Now, we can't stop it right now, but we could slow it down. And we're wasting time by not even trying. If you three would commit our county to the pro-action to fight global warming, that would go a long way and may even ease some issues with with insurance companies. And for, because they're thinking long term, they just see this thing getting, I mean, everybody sees the writing on the wall for not doing anything. So there's that. And um. Maybe that is all there is, but anyway, we need to have that be part of the whole plan. It should be a holistic plan and not just one thing about, oh, we'll get our land back from the feds. And the third thing, we have plenty of resources or experts around our neighborhood, at least within Oregon, to 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 create a plan, nothing against this, sir. But uh but yes, we need somebody who lives in the neighborhood. Those photographs that you showed of the two different treated, untreated, that was all parkland. I mean, our close friends here is not parkland. You talk about, you know, biofuels and all that stuff. Well, who's going to haul that slash up to the up to the logging road to access it? I mean, the the logging company isn't going to do that, that's not part of the contract. So this just, all that stuff is just not even practical for the most part. But uh, all right, I rest of my case.
My name's Rudy, I'm a Curry County resident, I live in Gold Beach. Um and I just say, I'd like to say, feel a little foot upon, um I feel like the initial agenda on meeting last week, um wasn't really put forward all that much. You know, you guys say you're open to all these ideas, you have this meeting one P M on a workday. I took a half of the day off work to be here because this is frankly ridiculous. And it doesn't feel like, even the draft that was put together at the first meeting is the same exact draft that was put together for this meeting, there was no edits made, you guys said, do you think about it? Like, nothing was changed. Uh there's still a vote, I think, scheduled for next Tuesday, it doesn't seem like you guys are taking any input. The second part of this is that I'd like to separate um the insurance maps from the rest of this this kind of fever dream we got going on. Um I understand that we, the insurance maps, you know, are not, they weren't localized, they weren't well drawn up, there are ways to address that. Um I'm not quite sure how the county emergency got caught up with the rest of this, but the way it has been presented to the public, it seemed very disingenuous. Um. The other part of this is that you keep telling us that this isn't a land grab and this isn't a management grab and all these other things, but the whole first part of your your presentation was on CFR and how that's going to be everything, you know, Article Four of the Constitution, Article, you know, the Tenth Amendment. Like, all these things don't point to you guys just wanting to cooperate with the Forest Service to create better fuel breaks for the community. Like, it it it's just blowing my mind that you can have this whole first part of that presentation and then come out with like, oh, that's not what we're trying to do. There have been lots of opportunities. There have been lots of opportunities for the county if they want to cooperate with the Forest Service, including the recently implemented like Shasta Agnes Project up near the community of Agnes. It's in the wildland interurban face, there's a Shasta Agnes Collaborative. Uh there's tons of good work going on, CFPAs using Firewise Grants to do, you know, fuels reduction around homes. Or on those types of grants uh would be a well-welcome jobs and money influx to the community. The Curry Watership Partnership has got around two million dollars in uh community defense wildfire grants that they've been using to mow forests, mostly up in Oak River. Try and convert that away from fuels problems that, you know, are plaguing a lot of those ranches. Um so right now, they're like, the way the laws work right now, the county gets twenty percent stumpage off of any any trees coming off of federal land in the state. Um you know, that goes towards the county. Uh in O N C lands, of which there's a little bit near coastal river and Agnes, uh that revenue can be up to sixty percent.
Seven.
Seventy percent.
Seventy five.
Seventy five.
That's the agreed upon contract from nineteen thirty six, but it's currently at fifty percent, but we're we're pushing hard to get to twenty five percent now.
Right, so there, you know, there's some amount of that money coming off off um any timber sales that happen in the county towards the coffers. Um some of your presentations said there's one to two uh K profit um per acre. Um in the thing, you know, we'll say the county gets whatever, you know, on average twenty percent of that because most of the lands are O N C. Um I think the other thing that's not being thought about is if you're actually serious about wildfire defense, like those lands are going to require re-treating every like five to seven years at a cost of about six hundred to a thousand dollars an acre. Basically, it's up to most of the profits from any initial logging you're doing. Um most of the science in fuel breaks these days point towards shaded fuel breaks, which the benefit of those is that you have large standing timber that reduces the amount of brush that comes back to lengthening the amount of time that the treatment's worth um in your fuel reduction projects. Um you know, some of the pluses of that is that it's less maintenance over the long run, um there's less brush and there's some evidence that it reduces to less local winds uh if a fire is happening um because of the disruption of larger trees. The problem with that is that you are leaving most of your larger and more profitable trees standing. So from a film county's copper perspective, what makes sense if you're actually worried about defensible space and saving people and health of the forest is it ends up being a lot less profitable? Um. What else I got? Uh. Yeah, basically, just like you say, there there are lots of other ways to do this. Um it doesn't seem like that's the plan here, it just seems like an ill-advised uh right-wing fever dream along with what's happening in Utah and Wyoming with state and local governments trying to take over uh not just management, but ownership of public lands. And that's, public lands, like forests should not just be for profit, there's an area for that. You know, I don't know if you noticed in check of our fire, but having a whole bunch of reprod didn't save that fire from coming damn near to burn next, like it was the wind stopping it, stopped that fire. You know, it ripped, I've done a bunch of surveys up through Nut Creek and Panther Creek and stuff on uh South Coast land, and that fire ripped through there. Uh you know. So like turning turning stuff into like a forget is not a good option if you're looking at long-term fire defense for communities. Um. Yeah, and I guess just like you said, these lands, uh they're not just there for profit. Um a lot of people live here because we have these public lands, they're open to the use of the greater good and, you know, other other ways that people are going to use these forests. Um. And I would say, I guess the one thing you take out out of this, if you do end up cooperating with the Forest Service um in a manner that's, you know, applicable to laws, so you're not getting sued and you're moving things forward, even just getting the basics right, like some of the proposed maps you had just follow the forest boundary of where you guys wanted to thin, which makes no sense if you're firefighting, like bringing bringing fuel breaks along ridges and in accessible areas and stuff, like this whole thing's just incredibly not well thought out. Thank you for your time.
Um hello, my name is Ashley Moore, um I am a lifelong Curry County resident and I've been a firefighter for over twenty years. I am very thankful for everybody in this room that brings their expertise regarding trees and rivers and salmon and estering areas and the watershed. I love all of those things, I wish I knew more about them, I'm glad that you're here. I'd like to thank you commissioners for listening to all of us, um your patience is commendable. I can only really comment to the firefighting aspect of this. I do think throwing around the word emergency is fear mongering.
Yes.
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 I like the idea of separating the two and making these two separate issues. Um I think we can all agree, we don't like fire map, you guys hate it, we hate it, it's it's a it's a bad idea, it's a bad bad move by the state. I do have some real world experience that relates to the logging that you are so motivated to accomplish. And that is in the fire scene. So I worked the O'Brant Creek Fire in Ophir in twenty twenty-three, I was there for ten and a half hours. And that fire was the definition of the urban interface. Trees and forests surrounded two or three dozen houses, they were all spread out. You know what's great about that fire? Anything can be great about a fire, is that we had over sixteen agencies respond and we saved every single home.
Yeah.
You know why all those homes were saved? It's because those homeowners took defensible space seriously. Most had metal roofs and many had fiber cement siding. That and the amazing response from our brothers and sisters in the fire service, as well as CFPA being some of the best tank firefighters in the entire Western United States. Logging or lack of logging had nothing to do with it.
Thank you.
And frankly, I find it insulting, Mr. Hollinger, that you would insinuate that logging is more important than these proven precautions for homeowners to protect their homes from wildfires. These guidelines are also what protect us firefighters on the ground. If I'm on a wildland fire and I come up to a cedar shingle home that has brush all growing around it and touching it, grass growing three feet tall, cords, a wood stacked up against the siding, and a wooden shingle roof with difficult road access, I'm not sending my crew in there to defend that and risk their lives. It's not happening. And I cannot stress this enough, that absolutely no amount of logging will save homes that look like that. That's the first step. I think Mr. Hollinger puts too much emphasis on logging as an almighty savior in your little presentation you gave, while the tried and true protections of homes are being ignored, I've seen it. If those homes had not had the defensible space, we wouldn't have bothered our time there because it would have been risking us as well. Whether the forest is there or you clear cut the whole thing and that fire still happens, those homes will still be lost. So. When you throw around the word emergency and you you start talking about all this logging, it scares me that, hey, look, we logged it, you're safe now, you don't have to do your defensible space and the homeowners won't take that, those actions to protect themselves and protect the firefighters who, let's face it, we live in Oregon, we wildfires are going to be a part of our life forever and unless we want to get rid of all the trees, which none of us do. So don't put so much emphasis on one than the other, is my takeaway for that. I do have one question for Mr. Hollinger though, and that is, what are your intentions with my county? Because you've been in office for like a little over a month, right? And I liken it to a bull in a china shop.
So in intentions for the county, my intentions for the county are to, again, let's boost economy and industry and bring tourism back and continue recreational and all the outdoors that that we all enjoy here and continue to share them. I see a lot of towns for Port Orford current example, great example is Port Orford right now. I live in Gold Beach, I'm jealous of Port Orford right now because you guys are doing a great job with cleaning up Main Street and making it all very inviting and attractive for people to come down. I want all of our communities to do that. And so in this plan that I'm proposing is not only just to help stimulate and help grow economy around here, but also to help draw more people to the area to spend money. So tho- those are, those are my intentions for the county. It's not to, it's not to clear cut, I've never ever set up one to clear it, never said ever I'm on the strip line. What we are proposing to do is solely told to us through this plan by the Forest Service and the D. They will, they would tell us what to cut or what not to cut, we would be telling them what to cut.
So what is your hopeful timeline for this, that this will take place? I mean, are you looking at June, Forest Service is doing what we want them to, I mean, December, are you looking at three years from now? What is your idea of what this timeline should look like?
Yeah, so so I'm looking at uh having a meeting with the Forest Service in in the near future, hopefully within the next month. To to and and she does have the invite to come down here, she does, did say she wants to come down here and meet and see. Um so that would be, that would be the next step.
Okay. I would encourage you to listen to the constituents here, many of us voted for you in good faith. Some of us may be regretting that decision.
And and what I'm doing here, I believe in my heart, is in good faith to the county.
Okay, well, we'll hold you to that because. Revenue at is the bottom line and at all costs is unacceptable to the constituents of this county. We care about more than just money here and collaboration is more important than cramming a PowerPoint down our throats and saying, this is great, guys, instead of. My opinion is that you should have collaborated with the local firefighters on your presentation before you started it. Collaborated with the Audubon Society, collaborated with our watershed councils and talked to all of them to get all of the pieces of the puzzle. Because a lot of people are mad because you missed out on a lot of pieces of the puzzle. So if you collaborated with that, there are so many people in this room that want to help. We want to help, we will volunteer our time, we are stretched thin, but we want to volunteer and we want to help.
I very much appreciate you.
Thank you for listening to me and Sir Hollinger, I give up that you will listen to us.
Hi, Humphrey, from Port Orford, and wanted to just uh make a couple points of questions. One, being that a large portion of the wildland urban interface where you uh uh suppose that there's more fire danger to us, is also buffered by a lot of private timberland already. And I, my question to you is, have you considered requiring these timberland owners to create defensible space that would be that buffer that we need to keep our urban areas safe? And my next point being that uh this, these public lands that are our national forests, were basically created to keep this land for use by the public and for future generations. And I feel that it's very short sighted that you're considering using parts of these public lands that are owned by every citizen of the entire United States to come up with Curry County's budget shortfall. There must be other ways that you can raise money than by overtaking essentially let these lands, even though you're suggesting you don't want to own them, take them over. Essentially, you're preventing them from being able to be used by all of the citizens of this country who actually own it.
Hi, I'm Greg, I'm from uh, I'm a taxpayer in Port Orford. And thanks for coming here, thanks for having the meeting, thanks for all the really articulate people who are knowledgeable about the issues. Uh I may not be that knowledgeable about it, but I am a taxpayer and I'm concerned about uh where my dollars are going and the health, the economic health of our county. Uh so you were, you all were asked um if what has been spoken today would change your mind or and maybe take it off the ballot or take it off of your agenda on your next reading and uh. And Commissioner Hollinger, what was that your name?
Hollinger.
Hollinger, thank you. Said that what you've heard would, would not ask, would not urge you to take it off. Considering that you, that this plan that you have, you have done the research on how much money you'll make or how much money it's going to cost, who's going to do it? Any legal issues that may come up that the county may have to defend? Are there, are there any issues that would, so if, for example, let me just ask you. If, if you knew that the county was going to have to spend a million dollars to defend this in court and would lose, would you still put it on the ballot?
No.
Okay. What would, what would, considering that it's, that you haven't, there's so many issues you haven't considered. What is the advantage of putting it, what is the advantage of voting in? And, and then doing your research? Why are you not doing your research first? This is a serious question. Why is this, why is it, why is it, why are you throwing this out for? It's like a, why? Why, why do you want to pass it before you know what it's going to do? And how it's going to work?
Do I know what we're going to make off of this? No.
Stand up.
Stand up. Money.
Do I think that I know now, or any of us know now, what this, this can make, a hard firm number? Absolutely not. I mean, we can't do or create anything unless we know from the Forest Service what we can do, right? And as far as, as far as costs are concerned. Again, the county is not looking at spending any costs coming out of our pocket for us to do any of this work.
Have you looked?
Yeah.
Have you done a cost analysis?
Have you?
Done a cost analysis?
And I'm, I'm basing this, I'm basing this off the Apache county. They did not spend any money out of their county to run their leadership road.
Have you looked at the situation on the ground here? So have you looked at what it would cost here? You personally, any, any of the three of you?
I don't know how to answer your question.
It's a yes or no answer.
Cost analysis.
Have you or have you not?
I guess I don't know how to answer your question, whether it's yes or no. Because in terms of details, as far as what is required or what we would be making based off of what we would be allowed to do or be able to provide to private industry.
Okay, have you then, so you don't know, you're willing to answer about the money. How about the legal? Have you talked to any lawyers about this?
At this point in time, I personally have not talked to lawyers.
Have any of you talked to lawyers? No, sir? Have you talked to a lawyer about this?
I'm doing research right now on all of this. That's what I'm doing.
So then we shouldn't vote on me to request.
And listening to you is part of the research.
Okay, but not listening to lawyers is part of it?
We have a lawyer. We have a county lawyer. We have to listen to him. So, yes, I have talked to him and I am listening to him.
Is he, and he's saying this is a good idea to go ahead with this?
He's still doing research on it. We're all of them.
People doing research on everything.
So, okay, so is, so I guess what it comes down to for me is why are you, are you considering passing this before you know the legal? The money, the, with the Forest Service, with the, I mean, there's just so many issues you don't know. Why would you pass it before you know what, what, what the effects are? Why?
Don't want to pass anything.
So if you were, why would you pass this if you didn't know anything about how it was going to work or the effects or the cost?
If I don't have all of the information that I need, I'm not going to pass anything. I'm not going to support passing anything. If I don't have the information I need to make a decision, I'm not going to support passing anything.
As long as I'm here, I'm solid as last guy. What would it take? What, what would the information be? What, what would be a deal killer for you guys? Yeah, is there a deal killer?
I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer.
So, so you haven't seen any deal killers yet?
So can I, can I? So my, my understanding may be, because I'm learning a lot of this as you are, at the same time, right? My learning of this, my understanding of this may be naive, right? I, I'm not sure yet. There's a lot of, you know, why would you take over the forest? Why would you do this? Why would you do that? Why would you take it out of the hands of the experts? Why would you, how are you going to, how are you going to be able to manage the forest? How are you going to be able to fight the fire? How are you, so here's my take. This discussion is about exercising our local jurisdictional's authority to coordinate with the federal and state agencies that manage our forests. Okay, so for instance, would you, would you feel more empowered if we have a seat at the table when discussing the management of our forests and you have us at your disposal to discuss your issues?
No.
You would? Okay, so, so, so.
Yes, so I.
Rather work on.
Yeah, I feel better as an example.
Listen, I got this. I, I know, I know the question too. I got, I'm asking the question, yes. What advantage does this give you? So are you saying that by passing this, you will have some further authority with the Forest Service or with the timber companies or whatever? That you don't have now?
We've, I'm just trying to understand. So we would be exercising, from my understanding, we would be exercising our authority to require them to coordinate with the local governments.
Cooperate.
You're going to require the federal government to do something?
My name is Alan Johnson. I'm a Port Orford resident. And I hope, well, I hope it's a non-competitional question. So what I understand, there's roughly two thirds of the county millions are federally owned today, is that?
Sixty, seventy percent.
So, so, but what I, I'm under the impression that the feds, when, when federal lands like that, they recognize that there's an obstacle to local revenue generation, you know, people that otherwise have businesses or are part of things that are taxable. Do they give us some sort of annual allotment of money in recognition of that inability for us to generate revenue from it ourselves? I, I know there's a formal term for that program, but for all of us.
Right, so there's, 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 so there's PILs, Payment in lieu of Taxes. That, that is not always reliable. It ends up having to get swung into some bill at the last minute by our local, by our, our state legislators at the federal level. There's SRS funding, which is direct timber funding. And so a lot of times what we're faced with is, is identifying whether or not we want to accept the SRS funding or the ONC funding. And we generally, well, we always take whichever is larger at the time. And so that's, those are the funding mechanisms that are in place. So, yes, for, for mid, for, for almost, probably a little over a decade, legislation has been slipping what would be called Payment in lieu of Taxes PILs into legislation to offset the amount of revenue lost due to the downturn of the timber industry in our, in our federal lands.
So that money flow is still, still occurring. It's just it's a little bit off and on, is that?
Uh, it's, well, it, it's not off and on, but it's, it's at a, I would say it's probably about twenty percent of what our, what we used to sustain off of. Right, so we used to sustain off of an average of about five million in timber receipts. Now we get about a one million. If that applies.
Just in a comment as well, I, I have a little Jeep and I, I explore in the mountains a lot, east of Port Orford area. Look at south, look at north. It, it can, this business, logging, you know, the private lands are pretty heavily logged, like in the Sixes River Ranch. The, the undergrowth, timber story doesn't look any less thick in that country than it does on the federal lands, which is, or is to the south of the Sixes. I, I just, I mean, I'm not an expert, but I, I don't see that the private interests are doing any better job at reducing the fuel available to burn than the federal land. Really don't. The other comment I'd like to make is that the Andel Fire hiked around quite a bit in the country, the grass in Andre, where the Andel Fire burned. And, and there are some places where it was clearly pretty hot. But I, most of the land though, doesn't look like it was that hot. A lot of the canopy and the trees are still intact. You know, it, it was a fairly low heat fire in many places. It, it seems to be exactly what the county, county refers to the county piece. But again, I'm not an expert. It's just a comment.
My name is Jan Smith and I live in Harbor. Someone else hinted at this question and you just kind of skirted around the answer. How much money did you spend to go to New Mexico? And how much are you paying the consultant? Simple answer.
So far, we've paid our consultant about $2,400. The cost to go to Arizona, all came out of my pocket.
All of it?
Hundred percent.
But you said, earlier you said most of it.
No, all of it, one hundred percent.
Okay, and are you continuing to pay him? You paid him $2,400 so far? Are you going to continue to pay him?
Currently, right now, we're working on a contract with him to renew a couple of our strategic contracts.
Hi, my name is DeRae Stone. I live here in Gold Beach. I want to talk about process and trust. We the people, you have heard, and we the legal today. You have a trust issue. Extreme trust issue. And if you continue to not listen to me, the people, both sides, all sides, your trust is going to continue to deteriorate. I don't have trust that you are going to listen to anybody. You have already just spoken, Mr. Hollinger, that you have contracted with this gentleman, right? I was reading that you've had contracts for like 15,000, 20,000, 30,000. And I went on your website and I looked at a little bit about you while we were all talking. I have concern about that without talking to we, the people. We, the people. You have experts here. Um, I have, my background is strategic planning. I did that for an agency for 30 years. You have forest managers, you have soil managers, you have people, firefighters. You have people in this county who are invested in this county, who want to see this county succeed, who want to see all of us come together. If you don't listen to we, the people, your trust is going to continue to not be there. So if you want to build trust, listen to me, the people.
Good afternoon. My first suggestion is next meeting should be at the library where we have a great sound system. We have a screen that comes down. It's warm, I mean, let's see everybody in this room and we can all hear you and you won't have to keep jumping up and down. Mary Stansell, I live in Pistol River. I've lived here since the mid seventies. I worked for the Forest Service for a long time. And I was confused. When I read the resolution, I was extremely confused. I was like, are commissioners going to take over the Forest Service land? But then Jay, you stand up and now I'm even more confused because that's not what the proposal is, yet that's the way it reads. So I think, in my opinion, prior to making any further decisions, give us the plan. Tell us exactly what our lands. I know when I worked for the Forest Service and I was involved in NEPA projects and we planned a great forest timber sale. We had environmental organizations litigating those sales. Where's our money going to come from if that happens, if we move forward with this plan? I don't think it's truly a risk of wildfire. I believe it's all muddy. And I think Dave Lacy had a great idea. Get some money from the timber companies that own lands here that don't live here. Lastly, I'm now a Realtor and I get asked all the time to recommend people to do jobs. I would never, sorry, Mr. Shandling, recommend an out of area person when we have the experts here. Thing I have to say is I voted for the tax levy even though it was way more money than I thought I should have to pay. But I believe in supporting my county. It's why I live here. The reason it failed is nobody understood it. Nobody knew where the county was going to go. So if you have to give us another tax levy, give us one that we can understand. And I can say to somebody I sell a house to, this is why you're paying these taxes. Because our taxes are cheap here. And that's, that's all I have to say.
My name is Cheryl. First, I want to thank you all for doing the workshop. I know that I listened to the rest of your meeting online. I was able to attend by pactful, order for Joko Longo's. But while you left and went back home, they continued on. And most of your questions that you had tonight, they answered. Yes, that, well, the thing is, I'm grateful that we have wildland firefighters down. I remember working for Humboldt State Park. I was called off duty. I applied a fire at Pistol River from a logging truck and car.
That was on that one.
You were on that? Yeah. There was no wildland fire. There was no here. There was nothing here in this area. I was taken to the pistol required party hall, since they had everything provided. There was nothing here. Kit row, all of them took off. They started training. Everyone took off at that point. So we went from nothing, we built up. It's a coincidence to have that happen. And I liked that teamwork we had. I liked what our community did at that point in time. I got in from pistol fire. Okay, my house was there. We were third cutting. My brother was smart enough to sit there and say, oh, once your firefighters can stay in our house, once you keep it afloat, you got a place to stay. He almost regretted that because of the snow, because he can't, it was almost, you know, better to have it going down, we could go for the cost, the insurance and everything. So when they dropped this whole thing up and they talked about the fire zone and then the separation of the map, that's superior. We know that map. Let's get over it. Okay? He has a sample here of what can happen. I know for a fact that whenever we worked, it was very difficult to work as a team with everyone during the fires that we were having. And so, and all they're saying is that we're going to be involved in it. They're going to, they're going to be involved in it. Yeah, we need to have some involvement more than we have. And I don't know about you guys, but our family's been there, all the trashes. So, look at my fore-grandfather. So our family's been, born and raised in Oregon, other than we're gone in the military, serving. Um, and two years I've been out, built semi over the road. I don't know, those old age is going, see if I can do this, accomplish it. But anyways, um, my question for everybody here is this is a first workshop. They said that they're going to have a workshop. It's going to be going on for a while. So can we create a pros and cons? Get, get what is out and then have a sheet made? And you guys can serve those to them so they can go filter through them? Be more, this is, this is so heart wrenching to listen to the bickering and the spreading of this thing. Be more, this is, this is so heart wrenching to listen to the bickering and the spreading of everything here. I didn't like any of it, whatever, you're not going to do the main. Your ahm, certain, uh-huh, then, then, ahm, don't do that, that's so immature and childish, okay? Come up here, you go, do your chest going. I've got the community, work together, listen to what they have to say. When I grew up, the forests were clean, you go walk from Grand Pass to the coast, there were no trees on Humbug. Okay? That's how old I am. Okay, so all the stuff that finished, but and I don't forget stuff that's about the day plant cheap ass trees that grow way too fast. They're softwood. I mean, you've seen this, yes, every single day they come down their park where the tree will pass through now, and they come down like, oh, I got a woman in the tree. And it's big. There's a lot of things that need to be done, our forestry's not just doing anything correctly, they're running a lot, doing whatever they want, you don't have to do what they're doing. You know, why are they planning, why are they third cutting? And when they're, you're saying they're not going to clear that, that will actually help sustain them, the money rivers, the um, states sell off the land to the corporations. Last year I called the state, they actually called me back. Um, I was trying to reach out to someone else who just called any number I could find, probably about the dog park, but anyways, it was almost, they called me back, I said, you know what? You don't even have land or building houses in this area that's needed, now I'm starting to say, I was a single mom who raised my kids as a single parent. I don't have breakfast, I can't afford to live here and watch my grandkids grow, why?
Vacation runs.
No, it's not, absolutely, I managed it for a while, six years, built it from the ground bankruptcy to fish bunch. So that's not the cost, and the money I put in offered for offered to the donor account, so what you're saying is wrong, and I'm really tired of hearing about people taking vacation. We're based off of law and tourism in this county. Our government took over our fifteen ninety six, they've taken over our everything. So the thing is, yes, back in seventy nine. We protest and they didn't charge.
I'm over the fishing.
Yeah, they, they exactly did. We just had mad big stamp of fishing every year here. Then that decided much before, you know? You know? And so like that, so there's things, I would like to have our own people, I would like to know things. You're saying they're not going to control it, it's that they're working for that map. So now we don't worry about the map, get over it.
But they also said that they were.
There are one gun signs in it, and so that's what the concern is, they're just going to go ahead and they're not listening to you, they're not listening to anybody. So why don't we have a?
So, so Mr. Hollinger, Sir Hollinger, I think what's an important point here is that you haven't listened to this side, you haven't listened to this side, you've listened to this on the screen over here, which does look good here.
Okay.
So the problem is, you can't involve all of us.
He just started this.
And don't sign a fees, that's what we're asking, please don't sign.
It's not, it's the first of many workshops. And they now, they have time, they have time to go.
I don't have anything to sign right now.
There is not. So you guys want right now?
There was this discussion items, so we want to continue talking about it.
You brought up, this gentleman here gets to hear it, he's in another state, I don't, I don't even know, but um, but the thing is, this is what it is, there's, so when we have, we need, we need to stop the boss on that map, the one person back there, I think you're out, we need to, just come on. You know, it's, it's serious, he has something to you, yeah, so.
Alright, 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 this, this, this is not hard, this is not, this is not.
Going in the right direction because our county needs help, and I am applauding the fact that they're not sitting in a bus fucking gate yet. Am I not, you know, broken and stuff, maybe I wouldn't.
Okay, the problem is, what they're saying is help, we don't even recognize this help.
Not you.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, let's, let's uh, let's have that conversation outside, but your final thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you.
Alright.
For everything and your continued research and the gentleman that has gone through it, lived through it, he has inside details, I might invite Mike to link um, to a lot of things, there's other places, um, I just appreciate you guys and I'm so sorry for the verbiage you guys had to put up with and continuing, just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up?
Thanks for the opportunity, Neil Holgman, President here in Central Tarry County. I live in a zone, the uh, map is still designated as moderate, correct? Surely it's false, because I live in Fog Hill. That's the least of our worries here, because I think that there are mechanisms already in motion to make that a more livable situation, a lot of the more rural counties and areas, not just ours. Thanks to my neighbors here who spoke very often on both sides of divisions today. But uh, I have a question that I'd asked at the last business meeting that was not, or the last commission meeting, that wasn't rhetorical, but I didn't hear an answer, I may have just missed one. You know, about a little over a year ago, county established a committee forestland urban interface classification committee. But I understand no one's been appointed to it and they've never had any. Is that correct?
Or is it no?
Okay.
You know, you proposed the hiring of a county forest.
No.
You're quoted in.
A department head and a sub employee of of that department to assist as needed. But I remember said I was going to hire a forester or a state forester.
Perhaps news day for the state. And you proposed the uh, now the appointment for the, or the hiring of a county resources department with a supervisor and employee.
Right.
Has there been any legal paperwork involved? Can we gun to make that decision happen?
No, not yet.
Getting into the base, uh, on the map and defensible space. I don't, I u- I get all the notices from your planning department of approvals. Recently, they give you no information, that most of them don't have an address. But back in the day when I was getting copies of the decisions or I was at the planning board recording, most of the time when an approval required defensible space, it was waived. Now, I assume Mr. Fitzgerald, who was now head of planning, can tell you whether that continues. And the fact that the county doesn't care about defensible space is disturbing. But the main reason I stood up here is, Mr. Fitzgerald, you said five percent cancellation rate. What percentage of the county are veterans? A very large percentage of the county are veterans. They have their homeowners insurance to USAA.
Most, some, yeah.
Well, they have the right to have.
Sure, of course.
Yeah, I, I lucked out, my second wife is a military grad, so I get USAA homeowners insurance. So I, before you run off and start fighting with people about every time you don't like a map, it's not credible. You need to get the, you, you should have available the statistics from your planning department as to who's impacted by defensible space today that wasn't already impacted by your regulations that you don't enforce. And how many people do have USAA? And I've talked to you at USA because I changed something recently. And I can't tell you they won't change their mind, but they don't care about that map right now. And every insurance company has the right to go online and get us bird's eye view of your property. And I suspect a five percent loan renewal rate is based upon the condition of the property, because I used to drive, don't shake your hand, you don't know that for a fact.
Well, I know what happened in my case.
Well, that's your case, I, I used to do neighborhood watch throughout my neighborhood, I drove by. More than five percent of the properties I drove by, no one would give an insurance policy on, they were not insured. So I'm just suggesting that just because one of you had an impact doesn't mean you should go off and spend a lot of time and effort and money fighting something without looking at facts, and I suspect that the facts are that so many of us are USAA insured and we're not going to be impacted. And yes, you could talk to them about defensible space. I, I happen to be creating defensible space, I happen to have put fire retardant props, materials around all my buildings. I don't count on someone else top cutting down every tree that I can see and like to see, just so that I don't have a risk of having a fire, thank you.
I'm Mark, um, a lot of you might know that I'm actually at the back of the day, believe it or not, I don't know a lot about this plan, I came to listen, we don't talk about it. This uh, I actually like the idea of having a little more say, does everybody remember the sun note that I can tell you, I live up at the topic tape statue. And they hired twenty four people, none of them spoke English, they cut every tree down, fourteen hundred trees down around my property. Flooded the property, destroyed Eden Creek, destroyed the Cisterns, destroyed everything else, this was the fire service. And all the people didn't come from Curry County, Fire Service hired people from outside, I would have loved to have had a say. I had to hire lawyers because they destroyed my windbreaks, I had trees that would then fall because they cut down four hundred of your old oak trees to, to destroy the rest because they were in the possible protected category. I had to hire lawyers to protect our rural wood trees because they possibly would carry it, I would have loved to have the county or somebody have a say into what went on. Uh, and I was part of the citizens committee fourteen years ago. We were villainized, nobody listened, we said, hey, the money from O N C is going away. We could see it, it was going away, you're gonna go broke. Uh, I wasn't real popular, but you're gonna go broke, you want to know how many things out of what we proposed? Everybody opposed them, no, you can't do this, no, you can't do that. What happened, the only thing done was transient lodging tax, which makes over a million bucks for the county now, thank God you got something. But we said, you're gonna go broke, and what happened? It's broke. You know, it'd be great if everybody worked together, the idea, I know this is early, I keep hearing this is early. But let, let's listen, if it's taken outside the box and this turns into something that can be worked out throughout the county, great. If it doesn't, so be it. But I think everybody should have an open mind, I'm here, I want to listen. Yes, there's a lot of comments that fly off the wall, makes it hard to hear at certain times, I watch people shaking their head at a single word because they haven't listened to what's going on. We should all kind of listen, this is a different idea. Uh, I'm curious, does it develop into something? Maybe, maybe it doesn't. But if we're all involved and listen, at least we can find out what's going on, should it move forward, should it not? Should it get to be this way, should it not? Should the county have a say? I believe so, it cost me an awful lot of money and destroyed huge amount of my, of my property. Because I didn't get to have a say and the Forest Service didn't work from here, they hired people that couldn't speak to us and I had to get a lawyer to help save my property. So, you know, I think we should listen, I've enjoyed listening to some of it, comments on both sides, but let's listen.
Well, no, no offense, but we have to listen.
You know, and I, I would say yes for some, no for others, I, I love watching people. You know, I can see people that immediately either start to talk, make it hard for me to hear, make it hard for others to hear. And you can see people, they already have their minds made up before any. But this is early, it's, I've heard it twenty times tonight, this is early, this is one of the early pieces. And I'm not saying it because I'm his dad, I'm saying it because I want to learn, I don't know anything about this, we don't talk about this stuff.
That's exactly what I am just saying, that they need to listen to me, the people and not somebody from Arizona, you need to listen to me, the people, exactly what your dad is saying right now. And they're all here, so you can gain trust.
So, so you got to start somewhere, and my somewhere was a breath from given to me on the campaign trail that led me to this gentleman, that led to conversations, that led to knowledge and some education getting into this. This is all still the very beginning of this process. So I'm here, we're listening, we're all listening here, we're not, we're not writing anybody off of any heads. So I got to make it clear. So are we going to vote next week?
Are you voting next week?
I don't know, maybe they, we'll see, it's on the agenda, and whether or not it's, it'll stay on the agenda, it's a discussion item or an action item, that's for us to decide right now, whether we want to take it on or not, we'll have that in discussion.
Just please listen to the experts that we have in our county, who are invested in our county, who want to help. That's the trust you will build in coming up with a solution, your father just said that people from out of the, you know, out of our area came and made these decisions that we're listening to, so.
So, so in Mr. Shandley's defense, he's not telling us how to manage our forests. He's directing us on how to be able to do it and to how to be able to work with the Forest Service under the law.
So can we see the November thirteenth meeting with him?
Absolutely, it's all recorded.
No, it's not, we two, I love it, it's not online, no.
It's, it's an automated, it's not ever torn.
No, I looked, I did, I'm good at computers. So if we could see that, we hope.
We will make sure we can, we get that too, because it was all recorded.
Mr. Acorn, how can you do business with a man who's been openly aggressive towards police officers, calling one a rat piece of junk?
Yeah.
With his co-founder, who we started Veritas.
Can you come up, can you come up here?
I read that. Not American.
I'd like to ask you, Mr. Alcoa in particular, how you can support a man who's on record saying that the co-founder of Veritas, who permanently disabled a police officer while serving a warrant on him, he called that man a patriot. And a true patriot, and called the person he that served the warrant a rat piece of junk, that's how Batman feels about police officers. And now you're paying him our taxpayers.
Okay, so first of all, I'll comment on the death of a police officer, if you think at all that I support that, you are wrong. I do not support, I do not support taking the life of a police officer in any way whatsoever. So, now you said support.
Well, you're supporting someone who supports that.
Okay.
With our money.
Okay, supporting someone is advocating for them, it's defending them, it's, there's a lot of ways, there's a, there's a lot of ways to support someone, okay?
Do business with them.
Of course, one of those ways is to support someone. Now, I haven't researched or verified or vetted anything that Mr. Shandley may or may not have said, I have not done that.
Please do.
I have read the articles regarding the death of a police officer, which was tragic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to say that, not that, but the death of another individual during that incident.
The co-founder of this company.
Okay, so I do not support what happened in that event at all. But I haven't, but I haven't verified or heard any specific comments that Mr. Shandley made or may not have.
Well, please Google him because it's available online, it's all there, he's on record, like I said, calling police officers a shared that be a rat piece of junk. Um, this man is vehemently anti-government, he's anti uh, law.
Um, this man is vehemently anti-government. He's anti-law enforcement. He's a conspiracy theorist who thinks that we're being controlled by reptiles from their brains. Um, it's all online, all there. So I'm not just saying this. Please Google him. It's there. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Carr and yes, I was listening. I have one comment. I was extremely concerned when the presentation was being made about a line of unilateral freedom of the county budget. That's not the exact wording. I couldn't get it recorded fast enough. I think that that is a very dangerous precedent and I'm concerned that nobody else has addressed that. Unilateral freeing of the county budget implies that there will be no oversight. And that was built into what will be gained and benefited from this action. And that concerns me greatly. That is the only thing I want to say. Everybody else said everything else very well.
I hope I'm not the last, but I do want to offer a comment. My name's Ben Holker. I live in Gold Beach. Uh, the only authority and credibility I have on these topics is that I've been burned out of two different residences three times. And I know the horror that we go through with our employees. So that has motivated me to come and to join you. And I think this audience is made up of some of the most incredible people. I would never imagine the opportunity to hear you talk throughout the day. I've not only just enjoyed it, but I've learned so much from you. I'm very grateful. But now I want to turn to you guys. I know you better than I know so many of these other people. And I know the nature that you bring to your jobs and I know the focus that you have now for your, your time in these positions. And it is at the best interest of the county to listen to you because your hearts and your capabilities are so true and so open. I really appreciate your investment. And I for one raise my hand to work with you and I encourage my neighbors to work with us to figure out how to resolve the economic issue that faces us when there are so many external forces that keep us from maximizing the basic resources where we live. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Is there anybody on Zoom that their hand raised or?
Somebody's waving on Zoom.
Okay, uh, hold on just one second. We'll, we'll bring you up on the screen.
Is this in public?
And it's being recorded through Zoom.
Oh, if you could find it, that's why I have my.
It is not public.
Oh, it's not.
But I will be posting. I see.
Why should, why should you do that? You need the recording of the workshop that we had.
November thirteenth.
Okay. Or you leave and you just hold on for a second so I can get the talk to coordinate that with you.
Um, I believe also goes back a reason age in some places.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll.
You have to put off.
Yeah, she's on. Is that who we wanted?
Are they able to speak?
Yeah, she's unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I am Loma Wharton. I'm a researcher and I'm an educator. And for those of you in the audience that are the experts, I don't want you to believe a word I'm saying. I want you to prove me wrong. This document right here is my research at the Oregon Archives. There were six propositions given to the people of Oregon. They never got to vote on when they became a state. One of them was that the land was going to be given back to Congress. And the one thing Congress was to do was to dispose of those lands. Okay? That's what the Homestead Act was for. They've taken that away from us. And I want all of you that think you know what congressional authority is along with department authority lies at Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen. Ports, arsenals, dockyards, magazines, and other needful buildings. The only land that Congress owns in the state of Oregon is Crater Lake. And the reason they have title to it was because that land was donated to Congress. Now, if Congress is going to buy land, they can only buy land under Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen, and it has to be ceded to them. So go check your national forests and see if they have title to that land. I don't know how many of you have read the Cronkite Report. You're saying that this process is illegal. There's ten counties that have been doing this process, five of them since two thousand and twelve. So tied, and I also want to know if you landowners know that there are Title Two and Three funds available to you to clean and log three hundred feet around each building on your property. Now, what would that do for your insurance? Cronkite Report is the Natural Resources Committee. When Doyle Chamley testified in front of that committee, they recommended this process for every single county in the western states. Please prove me wrong. Once your county commissioners do this and they bring back the timber industry and any other industry related to cleaning and logging your forests, you're not going to believe how much your county is going to prosper. When Apache County started this, they had two sawmills. One without electricity, one with one shift. At the end of forty-five days, they had both those mills up and running, three shifts. A pellet mill, a pallet mill, and Wagenbrothers out of Washington had a portable sawmill there. Ten counties are doing this and have been doing this since two thousand and twelve. So where do you come off saying this is illegal? Your ignorance is because you don't care to find out what the truth is. So go research it. I have it. I've got it all right here. I'll be happy to share it with you. Thank you for your time.
Go ahead.
I haven't asked this question again because I didn't get the answer earlier, which is so we still don't know if, you know, this, I didn't catch her, pitch her name, ma'am. Where do you live? Where was this woman's, what was your name?
Loma Wharton. Loma Wharton.
Okay.
Where, where am I from? I used to live in Douglas County. The Douglas County Commissioners have had this process in their hands for ten years. They've done nothing with it. I now live in Lakeview and this county is dying because there's no industry left here.
Okay, so Ms. Wharton.
This is legal. It's legal. It's lawful. It's ethical and it's moral. And I have all of the court decisions to back that up.
It's more subjective. Okay, I'm just trying to under, this is like the thing I'm still trying to understand. So Ms. Wharton, I think you're, is talking about, I don't know if she's talking about the on-play agreement argument or if this is the thing I asked before. It says, you've talked about on that website, it says there's Tenth Amendment cases. There's an on-play kind of say, uh, um, provision that seems to go along with the proprietary lands thing you're talking about. Then there's also the conveyance thing. All these things are on that website. Those are all about taking control and ownership of the land. And you're, now she's saying that this is the, that this is legal and it's the right thing to do and that that's what you should be doing. I'm still confused because then you're saying that you just want to kind of have this conversation to collaborate better with the Forest Service. So I don't understand why we can't have that conversation. I mean, there are other ways, there are other opportunities to have that dialogue. For those of us who've lived here a long time and engaged with the Forest Service, there are the NICA processes, there have been town halls, there have been all sorts of things where counties commissioners have been able to engage. I still don't understand which, which of these paths are you going on? Is it the Tenth Amendment? Is it the on-play, on-play thing? Is it the Conveyance Act? What exactly? Or is it, why do you need these resolutions? If you're not going to that, say you want to um, exert constitutional authority and exert, I can't even remember the language of it now, but why do we have that?
It's called jurisdiction. It's called jurisdiction. Once they have their, once they have their three meetings, all questions are answered and they sign that resolution, it becomes an ordinance and the sheriff enforces it. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so thank you for explaining this. So you have three meetings, you pass the resolution and then therefore you have some sort of constitutional jurisdiction that you don't have now.
Yes.
I see that. And then somehow that gives you a different legal standing than you have now that you can't have the court, can't have a conversation with the Forest Service then. I'm just still try, I'm literally trying to understand this because he said, oh, go read this website. It's all there and there's so much stuff there. I really don't know. I mean, honestly.
Do you know? I have a question for you. Do you know how many, how many projects your Forest Service and your BLM have shelved because of interference with environmental groups? This opens those projects up to be worked because it allows the Forest Service and BLM to cooperate, not coordinate, but to cooperate with the county.
The history of like the timber sales in this county, you would understand what some of the last big ones that have happened, which were the Shasta Agnes Restoration Conservation Timber Project and also the Postal Health and Forest Project were not litigated. And people did work together here because I think we actually live in a really special place that's different than our places. So I, I really don't like this whole, let's like invite everybody from other places to tell us what to do.
Well, this isn't gonna, this isn't gonna cost the county anything. The county makes their money on taxes, licenses, fees and permits. The timber industry makes the money.
And you're not helping their case for disparaging and conceivements.
She goes, go ahead, plus.
Yeah, and I realize that we probably have our disagreements. I just beg you to reconsider taking constitutional legal advice from a non-resident graduate from Ohio Beauty College. Uh, I'm sure that her heart's in the right place and that she's done her research, uh, but I would encourage you to get really good contrarian legal advice to examine the argument before you take action on this, uh, on this ground.
If you'd like to come and review all of my folders, honey, you'll find out that I'm not just a hairdresser.